Okay.
I don't know how to get it on speaker.
Okay, everybody, I think we'll be in to start the meeting. Uh, Brian, do you roll call?
All right, Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Yep.
Commissioner Kinser.
Here.
Commissioner Rock is absent. Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Mr. Milphy.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Pa.
Here.
Okay. Hey, great. We have a quorum. First item on there was to review the minutes. I know Meredith has not had those put together totally, so those will be moved to our next meeting. And no, Meredith with some packages.
Carry on.
Okay, the first item up for the preliminary development plan review is a preliminary review for 1020 Miracle Lane. Blake Bigelow and Dustin. Blake, if you'd like to come up, or do you have somebody on line that's gonna present?
Yeah, we have Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you give your name and address, please?
Yeah, Elizabeth Allen, 1330 Williams Lane. That's Nampa, Idaho 83686.
Okay, great. Let's see what you got.
All right, good evening, commissioners. As I said, I'm Elizabeth Allen. I'm from Brazil Cone Landy's Consulting. I'm representing the applicants Blake Bigelow and Dustin Simpson. They are in attendance. Also in attendance is Sean Frost, who's also helping with the project. So we're working on a supplemental for an application for a conditional use permit for short-term rentals, event venue, and a restaurant at 1020 Miracle Lane, and that's zoned in R4. So the intent is to revive the historic Payette Lakes Inn back to its former glory. For those of you who've lived in McCall for a while, the inn was built in 1915, between 1914 and 1915. So it's an important historic feature in McCall. And then as you see on this image, it has a very unique architecture. So that Rustix with Shelley design will remain. And then if you want to scroll down, I will start with the site plan. Thank you. So starting with the site plan, you can see that ingress will be taken off of Miracle Heights to the south there, and then egress will be onto Club Road to the north. Parking areas are proposed kind of in the corners of the site. Those are shown in pink, and they'll be in compliance with the requirements of city code. And then snow storage will be proposed in that top right area, parking area, that you see that's the closest one to Warren Wagon Road. Let's see. So existing landscaping, you can see the trees shown on the site plan. We're proposing to keep the existing landscaping but remove some as needed for the fire hazard mitigation code. And then we'll move on to the structure. So if you want to scroll down. So this first one is the lower ground floor plan. So you resumed in a little bit there. So that includes accommodations for hospitality manager, and that's the person that will remain on site 24/7 to make sure that there's no nuisance activities going on and that there's no disturbances to guests or the neighbors. And then scroll down, please. So the upper ground floor plan, that's that first floor that people will walk into. And that includes a lobby, event space for a maximum of 100 people, a kitchen and reception desk, and then scroll down. And then these next two floor plans show the second and third floor, and that's where they'll be utilized for the short-term rental rooms. And so there's a total of 18 rooms proposed that will accommodate 50 persons. And then I'll stand for questions.
All right. First, I'd like to mention that I did have this property listed and have sold it to the current owners. I don't have any other ties with it, but I have sold this property just a year and a half or so ago, I think it was. So, all right, commissioners, questions?
Elizabeth, it looks like one of the driveways is directly off Warren Wagon.
The, are you talking about the ingress or the egress?
Uh, the lower one.
Okay, yeah, so that's the entrance to the site. So when people enter, they'll come in through that lower Miracle Heights, and then the exit will be, come onto Club Road and then back onto Warren Wagon.
Hey, the current road kind of comes up and then angles that very bottom gray area. That's part of the road already. That's.
Or the Club Road.
Uh, Miracle Heights.
Okay.
So it goes up. That road's existing and services property and homes to the back of it. And then the actual entrance from the property comes off of that.
Okay.
So it doesn't directly, I mean, as far as the property entrance, it's not directly on. No, that road's already existing.
And then 18 rooms would be not 50 residents?
Thirty-six.
It used to have 50 rooms.
It used to have 50 rooms.
So we're getting that sometimes.
Yeah, we need to, if you're responding, we need to have you introduce yourself. You can answer, but you want to.
So there.
Blake, if you can introduce yourself and address.
I'm Blake Bigelow. I just here in Arizona.
Wherever you vote.
Oh, all right. It's 116 West Bruce Avenue, Gilbert, Arizona 85233. I'm Blake Bigelow, once again. Yeah, so at one point, there was as much as 50 rooms. So we are currently condensing it down to 18 rooms total, which would be 36 guests. Nobody's staying there.
I thought I heard 50 guests, sorry.
Maybe it's, I think, 50 parking spaces, which would be, anyway. I'll let you continue, Elizabeth, but yeah, not 50 people, though. It'd be just 36.
Plus two.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification.
It says a short-term metal. Need one of your application.
And Chairman, so what we'll do is before we submit the application, we'll update the numbers so they reflect the correct amount.
I'm sure Brian will be on that. Thank you.
So you're looking to do it more as a bed and breakfast facility, obviously, with the onsite manager?
Uh, Chairman Commissioners, that's correct. Having someone onsite is something that will be unique. That'll differ from other uses because it'll help take care of any of those concerns that come up if there's parties, or it'll put a stop to any activities that wouldn't be appropriate for the area. And I can let Dustin or Blake jump in if there's anything else to add.
And at this point, or you really don't have any, you're not asking for any outside venues? So you'd mentioned weddings and stuff, so that would mostly be inside?
Uh, Chairman Commissioners, so the space, the lobby area, will be used, I think, primarily for the event space, although we have also discussed the outdoor area to also be utilized, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we probably need to, your formal application, see a little bit more details of what that would be.
Hey, Elizabeth, could I jump in? This is, this is Dustin Simpson, 2554 Warren Wagon Road in McCall. Partner with Blake. Yes, our idea was to have it open for possible outdoor, maybe ceremonies, but any of the receptions or, you know, music, that would all be happening indoors. And just also wanted to add it that it's currently on the county record, I believe, as having 27 rooms. So as Blake said, it was originally 50. I think it's currently on the county record as 27 bedrooms, and we're hoping, you know, we're proposing to downgrade that to 18. That's all.
Is there anyone living or have lived in the place recently?
No.
Is it occupied at all now? So it's in the same state that it was, I guess, two years ago, maybe?
It is, yes.
Yeah. Because I was in that building. I couldn't believe how rough a shape it was in. It looked to me like it would probably take a bulldozer to get it going again. Is that, is that the way it looks now, or?
No, we've actually gone in and cleaned out the whole inside, pretty much gutted the whole inside down to the studs.
Really? Okay.
We have left most of the original, the main floor. But yes, we've done a lot of excavation, gutted the whole inside, and so it's much cleaner now. If you saw it today, it's in much better condition than it was.
Yeah, the walls were falling down when I was in there, and you didn't want to go in the rooms at all. I mean, it was really real rough shape.
Yeah.
Is the trailer in front, is that, is that a caretaker's trailer, or is that, is that part of this?
It was originally designed for that. I mean, before we bought the property, that's why they had it there. We're actually going to be removing it from the property. And, and so the inside, one of the reasons why we excavated all the interior walls is so that we could see what kind of condition, you know, was behind it. And short of a couple of water intrusion spots, we were actually really, really surprised at what a great shape the lumber is in. And so we were pleasantly surprised.
So your onsite person's gonna live in the main building then, right? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Have you, have you spoken with the sewer, the sewer district yet? About your plan?
Blake, do you want to?
Yeah.
You spoke with them. Do you want to address that?
Yep. So, I need to introduce myself.
No.
So, yeah, we have spoke to the sewer district, and the sewer district, what they said to me is, at one point, we were trying to rezone it to commercial. We tried for a long time. We had multiple meetings, talked to the sewer district. That wasn't going to happen in this case. When we spoke to them about having a, I spoke to, they basically said, as long as it's a residential zoned, and as long as it's not commercial, we don't count how many bathrooms it's gonna have. We don't count any of that stuff. So in that case, that's why we switched over to doing a conditional use permit and not making it a hotel anymore, but more of a vacation rental. So. Any questions about that?
No, I just, I just know that we've had with sewer conveyance, I guess, especially in that area, is something to get your arms around. Kind of in that same vein, I see, I wonder if you, about your one capacity. I could see you might end up needing fire suppression, just depending on what the fire marshal says.
Yeah, we definitely need that. Any other questions?
Commissioner. Any other questions, commissioners?
Nope, none for me.
Okay. I say continue working with staff and hope we move forward with everything needed for the project. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next plan review, 705 Brown Drive. We have Andy Stevens. Or Kelly.
I'm Kelly Dahl.
Hold on a sec, Kelly.
My cue.
Who do we have? Okay, there we go.
Idaho, and I represent Andy and Danny Stevens, who were unable to attend.
Kelly, I just passed out those pictures to everyone, so.
Okay, good.
I thought the "just for fun" was actually like, this is just for fun. It's not an actual pic yet for you to watch.
Yeah, yeah. So the name of this, we are submitting an application for a CUP for a vacation rental located at 705 Brown Drive. And "just for fun" is referencing the name of the place. A little bit about Andy and Danny Stevens, they live in Oregon, and love to visit McCall and, well, actually, in November of 2021, they bought a house here. They looked for a house, and they, I actually found them this house, and one of the requirements was they had a place to bring their family, as they visit here a lot, and that they have parking, or they're snowmobile trailers, or avid snowmobilers. So we found this place in downtown. And so when he found it, it was a little bit in rough shape. And Andy is a contractor by trade, and he spent probably the first eight months remodeling, cleaning up the yard, improving this property drastically, which the neighbors were all in favor of. Since then, we have put it in the vacation rental pool and it was renting to 18 people at that time. It's a 3,500 square foot home with six bedrooms, three baths. And when we, you know, heard about the new ordinance, we, and very rarely did we ever have, but it did allow at that time 18 people. Very rarely, we actually filled that capacity, but what they're shooting for is the capacity to serve or occupy 14 people. So it'd be two bedrooms plus the two that's allowed. The bedrooms are very large and accommodating. There's two living rooms and a big enclosed backyard. He fenced in the backyard, added a hot tub, and increased the parking space to not only include the driveway, two-car garage, but parking on both sides. He included the gravel on the left-hand side to accommodate snowmobile, the snowmobile trailer, in addition to allowing for the snow load at the end. We've, he's hired Done Right Management, which I'm representing right now, to be the property managers. We have installed noise-aware devices. We've always enforced the safety issues. And I've, I suggested, the only thing he doesn't have right now, which I suggested, is to add cameras that face the outside so we can keep an eye on parking. And just that's something I'm recommending for all of our vacation rentals. He's had his fire inspection, the preliminary fire inspection, which Ryan Garber said was good. He just needed to, I think, add a fire extinguisher, which he's taken a picture of and sent, and then having the interlinking fire smoke detectors, which were installed this weekend. We also had the neighborhood meeting on Sunday. Five neighbors showed up and it went surprisingly well. We actually had the next-door neighbor, which is his closest neighbor, a very strong proponent of the, of the vacation rental. He's, was there chiming right in about how well it's gone over this last year. They had one concern over, two weeks ago, there was a party there. And unfortunately, our company was not notified because they had disconnected the noise-aware device. We learn from our mistakes and we've since, are going to be screwing in all of the noise detector devices in all of the homes, so that cannot happen any longer. So we've assured him of that. The only other issue that came up during the neighborhood meeting was, they asked about parking up, if there's ever been an issue. But the only one issue was that the neighbor said that somebody parked on the street that's by the football field and, or the baseball field, whatever that is, and walked down. But that was the only issue. So we were very pleased to hear that things have gone very well up to this point. So we feel that we're in a good position to allow the 14 to continue to occupy this home. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Kelly?
When, five parking spots.
I knew that was going to come up.
On the side, but that's no story?
Well, no, actually, it was actually a two-car garage, so you can actually use both cars in the garage, but for some reason, when.
There's snowmobiles.
No, 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 no. Actually, on this left-hand side, that goes all the way back. It is huge. So there is no capacity past, on the other side of the shed. And there is parking for a snowmobile trailer pulling. So they actually have plenty of parking. They actually have sevens plus. But so that's where they, when they come in the wintertime, they pull it in there. So there's plenty of parking there. It just is, it's not clearly defined in this picture. Yes, it does.
Are you limiting the amount of cars when they do a reservation?
We always do, yes. They're limited to six, so that's one per bedroom. If they bring a snowmobile, then that counts as two, or snowmobile trailer, so that counts as two vehicles. We've found that most people who travel up here are coming groups, so it's never, it's never been an issue with, people don't drive by themselves to come to a vacation rental, so we're comfortable with the two people per vehicle.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, I think everything looked good. Thanks, Kelly. All right, we will move to the consent agenda. I believe there are two items that we will pull from the consent agenda and discuss independently. And that's 2255 Edgemere Lane and then the, the one on Morgan for the appeal, 221 Morgan on the appeal. I think there was some new information that came in on that one. And I believe Brian has some other information on the Edgemere one. Is there any other items that the Commissioners wish to pull from the consent agenda? If not, I'm open for a motion for the rest of the items.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
With the items removed?
With the items removed, yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Hear none. The motion is approved? Okay, now for the two items, Brian will go to, let's see, since it's first, Designer View 2301 and Shoreline 2301, Edgemere Drive, you have some.
All right, yes. A neighbor of this property contacted me discussing the HOA requirements for the subdivision. He didn't provide me with the actual HOA CCNRs, but he was saying that this doesn't meet the setbacks of it. It is not his responsibility to administer CCNRs on behalf of HOAs. It is up to the HOAs to do that. But the, the member of the public requested that we take this off the consent agenda and that I would inform you guys of that information. And that is all I have. Any questions?
Okay, so.
Back on the side.
Yeah. There is a conditional approval in the revised findings of fact that they get formal documentation of the HOA approval.
Okay, so it's still required that they get the approval?
Right.
And currently, it's good within the city setback requirements, but then conditions of approval would still require they get the HOA approval? Okay, I think that would cover that. So, so now we can make a motion to approve. Any other questions from Commissioners regarding Edgemere Lane? Sounds like, say they, oh, go ahead.
Conditions of approval changed.
Yes, so back up a little bit. This was on the agenda for approval in May or June, I believe. Would they condition approval that they get a survey done correctly identifying 50-foot shoreline setback? The shoreline setback came back with the building in the, within that 50-foot setback area, which turned it to go back to you guys to re-approve. And so it was on your guys' consent agenda for approval tonight. With some different conditions because the building site, the site plan changed slightly.
Cut the corner off.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions? For a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
For this item, just, we've already done the consent agenda, just a motion.
2301 and Shoreline.
Just to approve.
I make a motion to DR 2301 and SH 2301. For approval?
Approval of new conditions. Okay.
Give me a second.
Maybe say it again with approval with new conditions, with the updated conditions of approval.
For approval with, with new conditions that we just discussed, or?
Yeah, with the updated approval, conditions of approval.
What was the updated conditions of approval, is that?
Yeah, that's covered.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to approve Designer View 2301 and Shoreline 2301 with the updated conditions as provided by staff?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we have a second. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hear none. Motion is approved. Okay. The second item that we pulled off there was the appeal of FPDP 2301, 221 Morgan Drive. I believe we got some new information today.
Yes, the applicant representatives provided some of the documentation regarding the findings of fact. Do with that information what you will. You've already conducted your public hearing on it. At this point, it is formalizing your decision, so.
So. I was just going to ask Bill, Bill, or Ryan or Bill, is this, if you had a chance to review the, the letter from Steve or Amy? Steve and Amy.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Puntney, City Attorney. I have not had a chance to review the letter. Look, I mean, you guys are in deliberation mode. We've already sort of taken all of the evidence on this. You've closed your public hearing. This is just kind of after the fact, building a public record. If you'd like, you can table this matter and give everyone time to review and digest it. Or in the alternative, you can, you know, simply take notice of it and, and then move forward however the board wants to move forward with, with the, the current, currently drafted findings and conclusions. Really, it's up to you. Again, I haven't had a chance to review it. It's sort of out of order and out of process. But I always err on the side of, you know, if people want to submit and contribute more, then, you know, it's not, the, the, the public hearing is closed. We're not taking additional facts, but this is probably additional argumentation. And if we want to take the time to reasonably consider it, we can, but it's, you know, you certainly don't have to.
Okay.
I mean, I would say, I mean, an objection to your findings and conclusions is premature because you've not even adopted findings and conclusions on this. This is why it's, you know, if I seem confused, it's because I am. This is sort of outside of the sort of normal course of business. It doesn't mean that it's necessarily wrong or right. It's neither. It's just out sort of the norm, outside of the normal course of business. And, you know, if you want my recommendation about what to do with it, I would say proceed forward with your findings and conclusions, either adopt them or don't. Or provide staff with additional, with additional input. If you'd like staff and me to consider this objection prior to your adoption, we can do that. We would probably just table the matter for another meeting while we take, take the time that would be necessary to do a formal analysis on what's been submitted.
Okay. Commissioners, your thoughts?
I'd say the letter is pretty, like Bill says, is just reinforcing their testimony during our deliberations. I don't see any need to revisit that. I think we should go ahead with our decision from last month.
I just wonder if any of those items within the code should be looked at closer to make sure we are hearing exactly to the code. I know a lot of that was already discussed, but some of it kind of looks, there is a possibility that it doesn't really apply or not.
Mr. Chairman, there's never any harm in taking your time measuring twice and cutting once.
As I kind of, on the thoughts of possibly tabling, tabling this and letting staff and Bill go through it just to make sure there was nothing missed, like you say, I, so if we did move forward with the finding of fact, what's, I guess, what's the next step? That's just, we're done and they have to do something if they choose to?
Well, I mean, I'd have to look at what their next course of appeal on a floodplain permit application is. I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'd have to look at our code. This is sort of an unusual application, not one we see every day in the first place. So I would suspect you appeal this to the city council?
To be appealed to the council level next? Okay.
Commissioner Lyons, do you want to hear from us or not?
I don't think we can at this point.
Not now.
I just personally think to do our side of the, of everything, we should really verify everything, just to make sure what we're sending to council is correct. And like I say, there's some items in here, I know with the wetlands and stuff, that there's procedures to allow different things or change them, but I don't know. Yes, Commissioners, it takes us all or majority of.
I guess, I mean, I can make a comment. I'm a little bit behind the eight ball here because I wasn't in attendance at the last meeting. So I didn't get to hear the deliberations. So I guess at the moment, I would probably like to table it so that I could review it in a little more depth. I know that puts some of you at, you got to revisit it, which you probably don't want to do, but.
Tony, what's your thoughts?
We need to get it, we need to get it right. And I, revisiting it like we're talking about here, it doesn't bother me to do that because I was at odds with understanding the whole thing to begin with, while after most of the deliberation, I figured it out. But it's a rather complicated issue and I have no problem with revisiting the whole thing.
Tom, what's, what's your thoughts?
Well, I'm, I'm in the same boat. I wasn't in the last meeting and haven't read the meeting minutes yet, so I'm a little flat-footed on the issue.
Dana?
I'm fine with giving us an opportunity to review, especially for those that were not here previously. It does not hurt to review it one more time, so yeah, we can table it.
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion that we table it to allow time for staff and, and attorneys to review and bring it back to our next meeting for decisions, or well, for moving forward with the finding of fact, I guess would be.
Can you second on that, or? So I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote, right?
All right. Commissioner Petty?
No.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Kinser?
Yes.
Commissioner Paugh?
Yeah.
Commissioner Melfi?
Yes.
All right, motion is carried and it will be continued for next week. Okay. Now with the new business, we have a conditional use permit, 2302, 507 First Street, James Bode. Application for a, for a vacation rental. Is James with us?
Yep, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Thanks so much.
We can have your name and address and.
Sure. James Bodie, 839 South Loan Hollowway, Eagle, Idaho.
Sorry, James, before you start, Chairman Lyons, do you want to let the people online know that the consent agenda has been approved? So they don't have to hang out.
All right, for any of those that are online, who are here regarding the consent agenda that has been approved, there are the items we pulled off and the one item that's continued. So if you were here for that, we completed the consent agenda and we're now moving on to new business. Okay. All right, James, sorry about that. Okay, James, if you'd like to continue your application?
Sure. What's the process at this point, I guess? Would, would Brian run through, since this is beyond the preliminary? Or do you want me to? Or do you want me to run through the synopsis on the conditional use permit?
We'll go ahead and have you do your presentation on what you're looking to have done and then we'll have staff follow up after that.
Okay. So it's a conditional use permit for a vacation rental that sleeps more than 10 people. So this is a five bedroom home. So based on the two bedroom plus two, it sleeps 12. This has been operated as a vacation rental for the past three years. Have had no real issues to speak of. One time a dog that was off of a leash kind of ran at a neighbor and that was, since then, we've kind of put more language in the rental agreement as well as the email that's sent out to prospective tenants regarding, you know, leash laws in the city, stuff like that. But that's really been the only issue. Never had any party issues, police called, anything like that. We've always, really since we started running this, made it a point to make it, you know, a somewhat premium, high end listing that commands, you know, a greater rent rate and also therefore better tenants. Yeah, so no, no storage issues. There's two driveways as a corner property. So there's parking in the front, parking in the back. I'm not sure if you're looking at it, but I did submit earlier today a revised parking plan. It seems like there's a bit of a right of way issue on First Street. So I can't technically count the two driveway spots as parking. Luckily, we have a big driveway in the back, so it does have parking for five. So one in the garage, four in the back. Trying to see, so that's not technically the revised one, the two parking spots on First Street. The revised one will have an X on that, not count those two spots. And then the back parking, originally when I submitted for the short term rental permit, they had me remove parking in the back because that was over my max of five. So five parking spots, five bedrooms. So the revised one is one parking spot in the garage and then four now in the back off of Washington. And then that alleviates the right of way issue on First Street. So yeah, so also no storage is kept on property. There is one camera in the back. My wife and I really have never been too fond of having cameras all over the property with rentals there. But we do have one camera in the back mainly so that we can see when snow releases off the roof, which seems to happen within an hour of the snow removal guy being there, it seems like. So that I can see if it dropped and then have him go back out there. So we do have one camera on the property, electronic door lock up front to allow people access. What else? We did have our fire inspection earlier this year. Everything passed other than, at the time, there was some uncertainty about what was going to happen with situations where windows weren't to current code. So since then, I've been asked to replace the three downstairs bedroom windows. They met the required width and height, but they didn't meet the required square feet of 5.7. So those three windows are on order and they should be arriving end of this month, installed within a week of that. So I guess I am asking for a little bit of leniency, just the timeline here to get this through planning and zoning and then on to City Council. I am asking that I will have those windows replaced and the fire inspection completed, really by City Council meeting, but if nothing else, by the end of the year. So everything else is done. What else? There was the parking. The one other item I think that came up in Brian's agenda was City Works wanted me to complete a water meter survey. So I did get that in. I don't know if they've had a chance to review that, but that has been submitted last week. I think that's it. We do have, I guess, just a couple of things that came up within the community meeting piece, which I mentioned in the preliminary meeting. The only thing that was really asked by a neighbor was some signage be put up related to the fire pit in the backyard. We do have signage up and that is part of the email that goes out to tenants as they check in related to noise ending, I think it's 10:00 PM, and then ensuring that the fires are completely put out, all embers. You know, we have a hose out there, so douse down before they go back inside. And that's all I can think of in reviewing this. I know all that probably went over in the preliminary too. Yeah. What questions do folks have?
Jim, I know we probably talked about in the preliminary that, who do you have managing it or overseeing it to make sure we have somebody that can respond 24 hours a day if there is an issue?
Yep. So I've got Tyler Rumberg is listed. He's my handyman lawn care and he also does some property management work. So he is the person listed and is available seven days a week locally.
Okay. And I noticed on the conditions of approval, they're asking for fire sprinklers to be installed. Are you aware of that item?
I am aware that, yes, I am aware that that was sent prior to this meeting. Yes, I am aware of that. Prior to that, no, I've never been made aware of that.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for James before we go to staff? Okay, thank you. Jim, we'll have our staff report now. Right?
All right. Yes, thank you. This application is the first short term rental to come through process. Since we updated our code, it is a five bedroom house with maximum occupancy of 12 people. Generally fairly straightforward as far as these go. These seem to be managing the property fairly well. It is adequately sized, has five available parking spaces. As the applicant alluded to, the parking spot on First Street that was originally identified, looks like it would require having the bumper hangout into right of way. So we asked them to not utilize that, but there's additional parking around on the Washington Street side of the building. Yeah, there's a condition of approval based on the input from the McCall Fire Chief and his reading of the International Fire Code, the transient occupancies, which this qualifies as because it is people renting a facility for less than 30 days at a time. If there are 10 or more occupants at a time, fire sprinklers are required because it changes the occupancy type based on the use. And so there is a true approval to install fire sprinklers. Otherwise, like I said, really straightforward and it'll stand pretty quick.
So I know we discussed the fire sprinklers when we were going over all the new updated code and they decided not to do that or require that.
You decided you didn't want to adopt it under the ordinance.
Yes.
You're going to address it on a case by case basis.
Yeah, so.
Case number. This is case number one of the.
Basically, everything that's going to have this many people, they're going to require fire sprinklers is what they're saying.
Yes.
Yes.
That is what the fire department is.
So this is where the cutoff is right here. Many people in this particular situation then, right? So anything more than that, fire sprinklers are required or the same.
Bill, what is your thoughts on that? I just, I think that's going to be an issue.
Yeah, so a couple of thoughts. The first is, have we completed the public hearing here on this CUP? Was there any public input?
Well, I haven't done that yet. No, it's just kind of talking with questions with Brian and staff, but we can do that first.
Yeah, I think maybe we could save this for deliberations. I mean, unless you, yeah.
That's fine.
It'd be most appropriate in deliberations.
All right. Any other questions for Brian at this point? Morgan, I don't think there's much for you, but do you have any additional items?
We already covered the parking and we kind of worked through that, that the parking spots are too small on the First Street side. And then I'm just working with the water department to verify the water fixture unit sheet and what size the meter is. But I'll be interested to hear how the fire sprinklers integrate with, with, or is it, yeah, with the water meter? If it's a dedicated line that has to be installed or if it's a line that, or if it just runs off of existing fixtures in the house. So that's kind of where my brain's going with the fire sprinklers, but more to come on that. It'll be part of final engineering approval.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for Morgan? Okay, at this point, we'll open up for a public comment. Is there anybody online or on your computer that would wish to comment regarding this application on First Street? If you're on the phone and you're muted, you may need to hit star six. Anybody online or on the phone that wish to comment? All right. Anybody here in the audience that wished to comment regarding this application? Hearing none. One last chance. Anybody online or on the phone that wished to comment? We will close.
205 Colorado. We sent in a letter concerning maybe putting up some fences to the east and south to protect the neighbors.
Roger, Roger, to me. I think I know who this is, but I think your name was cut off. If you could state your name and address, please?
Roger Snodgrass, 205 Colorado.
Okay, great. Thanks, Roger. Go ahead. Sorry.
And we were looking at maybe asking the owner to put up a six foot fence along the east and south side of the property to protect the neighbors from noise and just. And give a little bit more privacy to the neighbors.
Can I respond to that?
We'll have a chance for you to be able to respond once we're done with the public comment. Yeah.
Sure.
But that's all we had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Roger. Is there anybody else online or on the phone that wished to comment regarding this application? All right. Hearing none, we'll now close the public comment. Okay, James, yes, if you'd like to respond to comments?
Sure. Hey, Roger, I didn't get that letter. However, I will tell you that is next on my list. I'm hoping to do it probably in the spring would be to add a full fence. I have a six foot fence just blocking the neighbor just directly to the south of me because the prior tenant that was in there had dogs. But I do plan to add a six foot fence that would wrap that entire perimeter that you're talking about. So I didn't get the letter, so I apologize. I didn't respond, but I do plan on addressing that in the spring.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, Jim, at this time for you? Far as response, okay.
Nope, thank you.
Thanks. All right, staff and Commissioners discussion.
So is that the end of the public hearings then?
Yes, we've closed public comment. So with that, I guess, go ahead.
The fire inspection was done in March. It didn't ask for fire suppression there, but it sounds like it's getting Ryan's new interpretation.
No, this is coming from the fire chief, not from.
Oh, I'm sorry, James. This is a discussion between staff and Commissioners.
Bill, I was asking you.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I guess I didn't hear the full question.
The inspection was done in March, but is it Ryan now that is Brian?
Ryan Garber is the compliance officer for the fire district that does the inspections. Garrett DeYoung is the fire chief that typically provides comment on applications. This comment is from Chief DeYoung.
But it is coming from the fire department that they have to do this then, right, in order to make the whole thing fly. Okay. It doesn't, it's from either one of them. Okay.
So I guess, Bill, was that a question to Bill again?
I guess which interpretation do we get to play with going forward since this is our first one?
Yeah, I guess the question too is, how long has that policy, not so much here, but whatever within that code been in place? Because this was never brought up to any of the other things prior to the change of the ordinance. But we had many houses that had a large amount of people and it was never brought up.
Yeah, so I guess a little perspective, this, again, this is Bill Punkinney, City Attorney. A little perspective on, you know, where we're at and why we are where we are and what this is and what it is not. So this is, the recommendation for fire sprinklers is based on certain provisions in the International Fire Code related to use and occupancy numbers within structures. And there is a reasonable basis at law for the authority of the city to require as a conditional use permit the installation of fire sprinklers in a short term rental, in this short term rental, given the facts. So there is a basis in law for this. This is an agency recommendation. And so, you know, certainly when you're considering all of the elements that you have to consider when you determine whether to, you know, approve or not an application for a conditional use permit and then determine what the conditions are, you take into consideration the recommendations of the agencies. So I'm trying to choose my words very carefully here. Yes, there is a basis in law for this. The fact that it wasn't included as a requirement in the ordinance is different from what's going on here. What's going on here is as a condition of this use, the fire chief is recommending that fire sprinklers be installed. Now, he's the expert on these things. There is a basis for this under the International Fire Code. But you're correct, it's also not required under our short term rental ordinance. What is required is that they obtain a CUP and as a part of the CUP process, you take recommendations and this is the fire chief's recommendation. So I know this is kind of word soup, so to kind of boil it down, can you make this recommendation? Yes, upon appropriate findings and conclusions, you can't. As part of the conditional use permit process. There is a basis in law for that. We've done the research on it. That's about as far as I'm willing to go on this outside of an executive session because we'd start to get into legal analysis and I don't want to be giving legal advice to to anybody other than my client, which is this board. And so if you want a deeper legal analysis on this, we'd probably table the issue and then bring. then bring it up, I, I would discuss the issue in greater depth at an executive session at a later meeting. In the alternative, you can just accept what I've said, which is there is a basis in law for this requirement. You can still elect whether or not to make the requirement.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Thoughts, other questions? Your thoughts on this one?
It's gonna be the same as telling the police chief we don't believe him on something, telling the fire chief we don't think he... So, you know, I guess for Mr. Bodie's purposes, an executive session is a couple of months down the road, so he's gonna be without his rental.
I'm just concerned that we didn't err in, in the way that we did the other ones, that we didn't, the questions weren't asked and the, and we didn't go the direction that we should have, and then this comes up and it's, now puts some parameters around it that we, we hadn't discussed before, so...
Well, we discussed it when they, on the ordinance part of it, but there's items in there that, to me, was saying if you do undo burdens on it, financially you can't do that, but this could be separate from that too, because...
This is, given that scenario, you gotta, they have to, the hoops have to be jumped through in order to do that effectively.
Yeah, jump through the hoops, yes, but I don't, I don't know, I mean, a house that has five bedrooms is now going to be required to have sprinklers, they're gonna hit that for every home, but I guess the, kind of the definition of transient, transient too is kind of right there, is it?
Well, yeah, that's the part, part that I was confused about, but I'm still kind of confused about it, but anyway.
I guess, I guess in my opinion, I, I would like to, you know, I, I agree that it's really hard to turn down the advice of the fire department on this issue.
If, if this is their recommendation, I think, you know, I certainly support kind of continuing on with the conditions of approval as stated.
The initial fire inspection, their results was a re-inspect, reinspection was required anyways, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
And then the recommendation of the fire chief was you have 12 individuals in the house to install a fire suppression in the house? What, what is our, what is our, what does our code say? I guess maybe this is a question for Bill about individuals per room? Was that a two to one?
Yeah, this is Bill Punkinney, city attorney. That's my recollection, I could pull the code up and look at it. And just a couple of things that I, I wanted to raise, the first is, just remember that this is just a recommendation that you're making to the city council. So I, while I do appreciate that we want to get it right and do the best job that we can, it's not like this is the end of the line and the end-all, be-all on it. City council will have to take this up as well. As a secondary matter, there was some discussion, and forgive me Commissioners, I can't see very well, who made the comment, about what's been done with previous short-term rentals. And so, my understanding is this is the first one to come through. Brian, I think could speak to that and whether we are, are not being consistent. Does that answer the question?
So I will answer Tom's question, our code requirement is two persons per bedroom plus an additional two people. We don't generally dictate that each bedroom has to include two people, they can arrange it however they want, just that is the occupancy standard based on the number of bedrooms. And then to Bill's question, we have, I believe, six short-term rentals that were entitled under previous city codes regarding short-term rental standards. Since we have adopted the latest standards that include the ten, or the ten person being the trigger for a short-term, or a conditional use permit, this is the first conditional use permit we've seen.
I move to recommend approval of CUP 2302 to the city council, was staff recommended conditions of approval.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. The motion carries. All right. Now, because of, we have some items that are gonna take a little bit of time, we've got one item at the end of the agenda that I believe we're gonna move up, just because it should be a very quick plat amendment, so we're gonna take care of that first. So we have the minor plat amendment 2302 with 411 Railroad Avenue, the Depot Company, I believe David is here. Oh, David, okay, we're gonna bump you guys up real quick, is this, hopefully it'll be a quick one, you can, you can get your take care of.
Chairman Lyons, Chairman Lyons, Commissioners Amy Holm, 706 North First Street. I'm here with David Carey, who's the president of Depot Company. We're here on a minor plat amendment, which is a pretty straightforward process, doesn't require a public hearing, of which we come back to you and say, we have a plat, there has been an event like construction or something that's occurred, and we've asked you to amend the plat. Brian, do you mind just putting the plat up? Thanks. So we had a, a great meeting with city staff kind of early on in this project to describe the goal. The Depot condominiums, just so you know what those are, are the current location of Salmon River Brewery on the main floor, and then in the basement or ground floor is existing businesses, Bistro 45. And then also, if you remember, Salmon River Brewery did, at, the Depot Company, did a addition to include the brew house. So that's where we are. So the Depot condominiums are part of the Carey subdivision, so this is lot four of Carey subdivision. So you'll see Depot condominiums located in lot four of Carey subdivision, and as I just described, we're specifically in that Salmon River Brewery building. So the minor plat amendment really is just to bring the plat into consistency with the areas that are being used. Here, the original condo plat was done in 2001, the, there was a record of survey in 2014 that adjusted some lot lines of lot four of Carey subdivision, and then the brew house was built in 2018, pursuant to a building permit and design review of that brew house. And if you're not familiar, the brew house is the area where Salmon River Brewery brews beer, and then that's also includes an area where you can sit inside, dine, drink beer. And, and that is a two-story building. So on the second floor, the 200 units of Depot condominium, that is the Salmon River Brewery restaurant and the, so 200 is Salmon River Brewery, the restaurant, the main restaurant that you may go into. And then we are asking to amend simply unit 101 to comply with, like I said, the brew house construction, which is the two-story brew house. So this 200 is Salmon River Brewery, as you'll see here, we've done a limited common area, this is a refrigeration unit off of 200. There is the common deck space that you all may be familiar with, deck on the north end faces the lake. This is the floor plan for the 200 kind of level, and you see unit 101. You might wonder, why is unit 101 called 101? It was an existing unit on the ground floor, do you mind flipping to the next page? So, oh, this is good. So two levels here, level, unit 100 is the existing location of the Bistro 45, and then unit 101 is the bottom of the brew house and some of the kind of back of Salmon River Brewery where they store beer or, or house supplies. So I described the three units, the brew house was constructed in 2018, like I mentioned. The idea is just to make unit 101 enlarge to reflect the brew house construction. This process is really simple, under McCall City Code, there is a amendment to a plat provision, which allows you to do that under a pretty simple record of survey process, which you don't have to have a public hearing, and so there are no changes proposed to unit 100 or 200. And then one final, kind of, maybe keep going down. I know we said we'd be quick, and now here I'm being long-winded, but I want to be quick. Oh, the record of survey...
Oh, I printed it out, it's in front of the house.
Okay, great, so that's the amended plat, and then the record of survey we're asking you to consider as well, and that really is just to make sure we follow the county process as far as what, how the assessor's going to consider this property. There's one thing that's of note on the record of survey. In front of the Salmon River Brewery brew house, if you approach that from the front of the building, is a grain silo. That grain silo is now brought into that lot, so that, it was just a couple of feet outside of it, so there's an adjustment on the lot line there, and also to comply with some outside, not refrigeration, but cooling units, and that's for the beer brewing process. So really, it's a simple request to allow the plat amendment so that unit 101 specifically is in, is in line with what is currently the use of the property now. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for Amy at this point?
Thank you.
Brian?
All right, yes, this is tidying up a little bit of territory that has been around as long as McCall has, and therefore gets pretty complicated as amendments to the First Edition and Carey subdivision and the Depot condominiums, but to boil it all down, as they described, it's really adding in the new construction and cleaning things up and making sure that all the lot lines are where they are supposed to be within the building itself, and, but that'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Brian?
Yeah, I will request that you guys make a motion to approve the record of survey and then recommend approval of the minor plat amendment, so that we have a record of that.
Morgan?
I had a few comments on the application, but it's mostly just adjusting some things on the plat, and then just asking for digital files so that we can check for the conformance with our digital data submission standards.
Okay.
That was about all.
Well, and this is not a public hearing, so Commissioners, any questions? Everything seems pretty flat and dry, and just kind of making a couple of adjustments to fit everything within the lots like they, they need to be. No questions, I'm open for a motion that we need to include approval of the record of survey and then a recommendation to approve the minor plat amendment.
And you're, you're not gonna have a record of survey number, it's like a informational addendum to the minor plat, because it's not, when we've done the minor plats the last like three or four times, there hasn't been like a additional thing with it, but if it satisfies the tax assessor problem, then we can include it in the record.
All right. Anybody want to take that motion on?
Directing approval of M2302, so McCall City Council has staff recommended conditions of approval.
And...
Separate, it's gotta be separate.
Think about it on that.
Okay, okay, and do we get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. All opposed?
Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Would you like me to, you guys, the suggested motion?
Yes, that'd be good.
Good idea, Brian, there, okay.
I would suggest that you move to approve the record of survey associated with minor plat amendment 2302.
So move.
Second.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will go back through the agenda, and the next item is design review 2322, 1697 Club Hill Boulevard. Luke, are you with us?
I am.
Okay, floor is yours.
I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen with you, just so I can kind of steer you around the drawings, if that's all right. So, and, okay, are you guys looking at drawing set now?
Yes.
Okay, this is Luke Vanoy, McCall Design and Planning, 121 Commerce Street. I'm representing Andres and Catherine Gonzalez, 1697 Club Hill Boulevard. This is a designer view because it's a residence over 3,500 square feet in a subdivision that is not approved, on the city's approved designer view list. So, the house itself is just under 3,900 square feet of total living, 728 square foot garage, some mechanical space in the basement. We're at the top of King's Pines here, King's Pines 1, so that's the, the portion that's south of Highway 55 there. We have an allowable lot coverage of just over 13,000, we're under half of that, it's 6,000, this is a two-acre lot. So, Club Hill comes up off of Highway 55 and then doubles back into this easement that runs through the middle of the lots that are on the top. So here's Highway 55, here's Club Hill, and here's the project site. This is a 3D rendering down from that easement, mountain modern style. This is a 3D rendering of the topography, the driveway, and, and looking down on the house. This would represent a future shop that is not part of this application, but we're, you know, making provisions for it within the site planning driveway. Some photos of existing conditions, here's the aerial, it's got a lot of really small caliper trees on it. When we order a survey, we usually get anything over eight to 10 inches in diameter, nothing on this lot registers as over that caliper. So, really beautiful views of Pett Lake from up here. This is a, a look at the neighbor's house to the south, here's the neighbor to the north. This shows you the topography, it's a fairly steep site, so it's a challenge to get up to where you want to be on this lot to get the view and get a driveway that works, and so that's why you see that we're, you know, providing some big switchbacks to keep that grading down below 10%, keep it drivable year-round. So, here's our setbacks. This is the building footprint, here's the future shop, proposed septic areas. We're gonna do some boulder retaining to make this driveway work here, here and here. The areas that are shaded like this here are proposed snow storage, big lot, so there's a lot of opportunity for snow storage. But you come up around the front of the garage, the front of the house, and the garage is tucked in the rear. This is proposed landscaping, what we want to do is come in and, you know, reseed any of the disturbed areas with native grasses and wildflowers, and then we'll do a fair amount of planting trees to screen from the two neighbors, but otherwise we'll leave the existing vegetation as it is. I'm gonna skip ahead to the main floor plan and then work back to that one. You know, open great room concept, living, dining, kitchen, everything oriented to maximize the view. This would be the primary suite, also maximizing view, mudroom off of the garage, just a two-car, slightly deep garage. Up this staircase to a bunk room above the garage, down this staircase... Up this staircase to a bunk room above the garage, down this staircase to three more bedrooms and a rec room, all of which open up to a patio here, and again, each one of them getting that view. Here's the 2D elevation drawings, and here's where we call out our height limit stuff. Max height from existing grade at just under 32 foot 10. Maximum height from lower level slab, 31 foot 10. And then this is just, these dimensions are pointing out that we're within our half height setbacks along that northern property line. Here's some 3D renderings to give you an idea of what the building form looks like. Obviously, a lot of glass towards the lakeside, definitely a mountain modern style. This calls out the exterior materials. We're doing a lot of exposed steel with this, some nice wood, aged wood that's meant to look like barn wood, but would actually be new cedar. We've got some steel panel that would be weathered with black oxide to kind of have a gun blued effect. This would be a box ribbed metal wainscot, so we're alternating between those two materials down here and then the wood up higher where it's not going to see the weather. And then just a little bit of stone accent, that's natural stone veneer. This photo kind of echoes the style and inspiration that we were shooting for. Here's just some 3D section cuts through the building. So with that, I'll stand for any questions and stop sharing my screen.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Luke at this point? All right, staff report. Brian?
Yes, thank you. This application is for a single family residence over 5,000 square feet within the King's Pines State Subdivision. Very clean, meets all setback requirements, building height, all that. Fairly challenging site, but they've done a good job of designing around the constraints of the site and integrating building into the topography. Yeah, like there's an approval or final engineering approval and to reseed with native grasses once they're done with construction. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Brian?
The future shop will have to come back for a separate?
If it is under 3,500 square feet, it would just get a building permit. If it's over that, it's a straight of it. If it's over 5,000 square feet, it goes back to you guys.
Total?
Right.
Counting the house plus?
No, just individuals.
Just the shop. Okay, individual shop, yeah.
So not likely.
Not likely.
Does it still have lot coverage?
Yeah, it appears that unless they get real big, they have plenty of lot coverage to work with.
All right, any other questions for Brian before we go off? Morgan? All right, Morgan?
Great. They submitted a preliminary stormwater drainage, a stormwater drainage report, and it seems like it will meet our drainage management guidelines. There were a few items that needed to be elaborated on and explored on, and I sent comments to them regarding that. And then regarding the walls, there's a note in there that if they're over four feet in height, they need to be engineered, have engineering plans for the retaining walls. And that was, those were my comments for this project.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Morgan?
The rock walls?
Yeah.
For around the driveway?
Correct.
Those are the retaining walls you're talking about? Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Morgan? All right, this is a public hearing, so we will open up for public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? Again, if you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Is there anybody here in the audience that wished to comment regarding this application? Hearing none, one last chance for anybody online or on the phone? All right, we will close the public comment. Commissioners, discussion. This one seems pretty clean, a lot of issues of any kind?
Beautiful house.
Yeah, I mean, pretty clean, minimal conditions of approval that we've had in a long time on anything. So open for a motion.
I move to recommend approval of DR 2322, the McCall City Council, with staff recommended conditions of approval.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. All right, thank you very much, Luke.
Thanks a lot.
Hope you're doing well wherever you're out there.
The hospital, it's familiar.
Yeah. See, Tony, we could have had you lined up with that. Okay.
Robert.
We're not going to let you go that easy. All right, moving on to the next item, we have a design review 2323 scenic route, scenic route 2315 or 2326 North Shore Drive. We have Randall Reed here. Hey, Randall, name and address, please.
Chairman and commissioners, my name is Randall Reed. I reside at 2326 North Shore Drive here in McCall. I'll be fairly brief on this because I think the application is fairly straightforward and speaks for itself. It's, we're here because of the location of this property within Lux Point subdivision. This particular lot backs to East Side Drive, creating it the scenic route and design review issues that are carried with the scenic route ordinance. It's proposal to construct a two car garage with a loft overhead because of the total square footage, although the principal purpose of the structure is storage of boat and other equipment. With the total size, it puts it within the ADU requirement, requiring a residence under the city of McCall ordinance, and that has been incorporated into the design. I'm aware from communication from the city engineer's office recently that stormwater management application will be necessary and that will be submitted this week. That expect to comment on that, you'll see the official one when it comes in, but this will be the only improvement on a nearly half acre site that has no other features on it. It's essentially flat, does not drain really to anywhere than sandy nature of the soil. There puts it where there will be surrounding property within this lot and certainly additional property within my adjoining lot where my house is, where any storm water or whether, when constructed or during the course of construction, whatever end up, frankly, it all soaks into the ground, including even after heavy snow years like we had last year. The other item that I'm aware of is a comment from the city that an additional site detail is required to show the routing of the utilities. I do have a sewer permit. The sewer will be connected onto North Shore Drive where an existing sewer line exists, and the water and electricity will actually be through connections to the existing home on the adjoining lot. And so those will route across via a trench and go into it. That will be shown on a site amendment that will reflect those changes. I, in communications and meetings with the area residents, there, most of the comments in regard the interaction of either the city setback requirements with the subdivision setback requirements or whether the subdivision requirement that no more than two residences per lot are, that no more than one residence per lot is permitted. That was triggered here, wouldn't be triggered but for the fact that prior, the prior owners of this property actually split the lot. And so there will only be one residence per lot, the residence again being because of the city's ADU requirement due to the size of the total structure. So that is certainly met under the subdivision requirements, and I had no formal objections indicated to me by any of the subdivision residents. Subdivision board gave their approval. I would disclose here, as I have disclosed freely, that I am a member of the subdivision board and have recused myself completely from any of those considerations, and that approval is part of the record. The other question that has come up, I was told by Meredith that someone may have called the city and raised an issue about a minimum 20 foot setback requirement in the subdivision deed restrictions. This, the setbacks here are well within the city's requirements. The 20 foot within the deed restrictions actually has a provision that says that that can be waived if the owner of the adjoining lot where the setback violation would occur consents. I am the owner of the adjoining lot, and I have consented. Formally in a communication to the board, so it's part of the board records. I'm not aware of anything else, but would be happy to entertain questions, comments from the commissioners.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Reed?
There's a note about snow storage, but looking at that plat, I'm sure you won't find room.
Yeah, it's in excess of 20,000 square foot, of which the total non-absorbable area would be about 3,200. And there's nothing else there that's going to present, prevent absorption into the ground. There's not enough grade for it to run anywhere because that lot has, there might be a 2% corner, but I do actually think the whole lot is less than 1% grade.
One of the conditions that you should draw right on that.
Yeah, and the map will be provided to show that topography.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Reed? Okay, thank you. Ryan, staff report?
All right, yes, this is an application for a garage with a small living quarters above it backing up to East Side Drive, and that is the only reason that is. Before you go, it is within the scenic route buffer. It is pretty heavily treed, it was existing landscaping, so there is a condition of approval to have a consultation with the city arborists to retain that as best we can. And then, yeah, so it requires living quarters because it is on its own lot. That is why there is a requirement that it has accessory dwelling. He does own the property next door, but since it is on its own property, it does have that living space in it. And then as stated, there is a requirement that it provides snow storage. It's a fairly large lot and a fairly small project, so it should not be a challenge to do that. With that, I will stand for any questions?
So pretty sure because it's on individual lot, it doesn't go into the ADU requirement of any deed restrictions because it's by itself, so we don't have to deal with any of that. So I'm pretty sure of that, just wanted to make confirm. Commissioners, any other questions for Brian? Morgan?
Hello. So there weren't any stormwater items submitted, but it sounds like it's in the works. It's more of just documenting of what happens with the stormwater. It's pretty flat, so I don't expect it to change much of this plan at all. And it's a very, it's a large lot for the size of this project. So it's more of just documenting what happens on the property and what will happen after the project happens. And then I had the comment about updating the site plan where the utilities serving the property will be located. Yeah, and those were my comments for this project.
Commissioners, any questions for Morgan? All right, at this point, this is a public hearing, so we will open up for public comment. We'll bring you back up if we have any other questions. So we'll open up for a public comment. Is there anybody on the phone or online that wishes to comment regarding this application? Once again, if you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Is there anybody here in the audience that wished to comment regarding this application? All right, last time, anybody on the phone or online like to comment? All right, hearing none, we will close the public comment. Commissioners, discussions. Again, this one seems pretty, oh, you took it. Yeah, I say it's pretty basic, there's not a whole lot to it. There's no questions or concerns, I'm open for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve DR 2323 and ST 2315 with staff recommendations, and I think that's about it, isn't it? Okay. There's the motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to design review 2325 and shoreline 2308 for to be determined Rainbow Lane. We have Kalen and Jen Limson. Are they here or represented? Oh, okay, if you'd like to come up and make your case, we'll use your name and address, please.
We are the Lundeen family. We brought a couple of our kiddos with us, but not all of them.
Kalen and Jennifer. We have two teenage girls who stayed home for school commitments and mountain bike team commitments. And then we have Hawks and North. We are at 742 North, 920 East, Orem.
And it's our goal to build a single family home in the Pilgrim Cove development, sort of on the coastline as it moves up, starting to go north again towards the Girl Scout Camp. And we've been working with Brian, William, staff to make sure that everything is in line, and I think we've managed to work through, outside of a couple, what do you call the, a couple of comments that I think we've got resolved. But anyway, so I'm happy to take us through. We've worked with an architect that we think is really talented and spectacular, and come up with a building that our goal is to kind of pay respect to some of the historical buildings of the Cali County Meadows and Fields. And if you want to just pull down a little bit, the goal is to use all natural materials, all the outlets backed out here, natural stone and wood, and tried to do something really special, and we're really excited. We spent the summer building our dock next to the Corvays and the Ashley family, which is so great, it was a fun summer. And now we're ready to start the next chapter of the venture in building a place for our family and look forward to being part of the community for years to come. So I'm happy to speak through more details or we can, I know that I can, is it helpful to address a couple of the comments that were called out in there? Okay. So the first one is on the overall square footage of the home, and we've got that we are in line, we just have a discrepancy for how it's calculated. So Brian and I kind of worked through that, and we decided that we could finalize that and submit a color coded version that got us in line after the hearing. So maybe Ryan can come up on that later if needed. The snow storage, actually, that was just oversight and it is on there, so I think we're good on the snow storage. It's called out to meet the requirements. And then I think the last one was on the trees. We actually walked the site over the summer with Kurt, and put together a plan. And so we're going to make sure that above all, like our goal is to keep as many of the mature trees as possible, especially everything outside the building envelope. And there were a couple of things like, I think it was a curdled, correct me if I'm wrong, like a grand fir, they recommended maybe coming down, replacing it with like three tamarack, so we're going to, we're going to do that stuff. So our, it sounds like our action items to get, have an email correspondence with Kurt to make sure they're all aligned and then submit that to the cities that we've got all the shoreline stuff covered. And I think those are, I think those are the conditions, that's what I was looking for, those are the conditions, I believe. But I'm happy to take any questions.
So the tree you were talking about, there was one mentioned in the driveway or two in the driveway that they were talking about taking out, or they said they may not be needed to take out? Where did that end up?
Yeah, so the one, the driveway right now, so you'll see there's actually an existing um... Yeah, so the one, the driveway right now, so you'll see there's actually an existing, this portion here is all existing, so basically the new driveway to connect to the house would come from here down. So we immediately jog over to give the five-foot minimum clearance from the property line and then to meet the garage. This one here, if you remember, since it's kind of like got a gnarly lean to it, so it was recommended that that one comes out anyway, but it also kind of puts it in the driveway. And, I like, did that answer the question? But yes, the one, the two that are here would be coming out.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
This is right next to the Girl Scout camp over in Pilgrim's Cove then, right? Is it by the swamp area? Is that what it's supposed to?
Yes, yes, our neighbors call it the Lily Pond, which I like a little bit in the swamp, but.
Excuse me, Lily Pond, yeah, that is a better term, okay?
Yes, I think the sixth lot for where the residential area ends and the park begins.
Okay.
So it kind of starts to wrap north again.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions for the applicant at this point? Okay, we'll go to staff report, Brian?
All right, yes, thank you. This application is for a single-family home within the shoreline setback, or a shoreline environment zone. We have worked very closely with the applicant for several months to make sure that they're in compliance and I think they've come to that point. Yeah, they got outstanding questions. I think there's a little misunderstanding on my end of, up here it says 3769 is the building footprint. Down here, it's slightly less. I think there's some math that I was not understanding correctly, but they're somewhere between two square feet under their allowable lot coverage or 70 feet over. But I think we've gotten to a resolution on that, but there's still a condition of approval to make sure that they are under the allowable lot coverage. Snow storage is identified on a different plans. The trees that I was referencing for a consultation with Kurt to see if they are required to be removed or not are the ones over on the shoreline side of the house. I'm not sure why it is necessary that those are removed, but again, they'll just be hard to talk to Kurt on it if they can't keep those. Yeah, that will stand for any questions?
All right, commissioners, any questions for Brian?
The five-foot driveway?
Right.
So existing, if it's existing, it doesn't count? Is that a correct understanding?
This is a good question. This is a state subdivision within the area of impact. The state tends to do things, they have the authority to preempt zoning code and subdivide and develop properties as they see fit. Once it comes into city or private ownership, it is then under the authority of the city or area of impact county commissioners as the case may be. That's a long-winded way of saying these things that are here may be entitled at some point in history through the state of Idaho. The county prosecutor has declined to pick that particular fight bringing them into compliance on existing items. It would be my preference that they maintain five-foot setback off of the driveway and modify the existing driveway as needed. But I don't know that we have the ability to require.
It's my only, you know, this one, this one goes through what happens to the next one is my only concern about it, right?
Well, yeah, I guess that's a question for Bill on, maybe you'd have to go through the past entitlements and if it's been approved.
That's, that's big indeed.
Yeah, that's way back.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I mean, if we can get the applicant to agree to Brian's proposed modifications now, that would be ideal and the alternative, we'll have to table this for a later meeting while I review our ability and discuss with prosecuting attorney our ability to enforce these requirements.
It doesn't look like it has to move that much, does it?
Well, one of the, please scroll over this a little bit, Brian. On the lot, this is, this is, there's significant slope here and this is the most heavily wooded area of the lot. So they're not called out here because it's not in the building envelope, but there's maybe a dozen mature trees that border that line there. So those would need to come out. I feel like it'd be fairly extensive, actually, to move that over. There's some retention, there's like disperse that's there, but. This is also then retained along here because of the elevation change. This is an easement over to the neighboring property.
Okay, at this point, we're still going through, so any other questions for Brian? Morgan?
So the stormwater drainage report and plan were submitted with this application and it looks like it'll comply with our guidelines, so that's, that's good. And then I think there were, there's, there was a spot on the plans where it looks like the side yards might be terraced and just making sure those are 30 inches or less. And if they're over four feet, they need to be engineered, just like the previous project. And then I had a question about the existing forked gravel surface that's shown. You can kind of see it on this plan. And if it was going to be used anymore. And then there were a few responses that the gravel forked road isn't used anymore and they're going to re-vegetate it, so that's good. And then I'll just have to look through and work with their engineer on what the plans say and if those walls are, are small enough.
Any other question, or any questions for Morgan? We have Kurt here today, no? Do you have any comments on this one, the trees or anything, Kurt?
Um, I think they summarized it fairly well, I can probably come up.
If there's anything you need to add, or do you, Commissioner Curtis here, do you have any questions for Kurt?
Mostly the trees in the front that were questioned on the lakeside.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, as I recall, as he'd mentioned, there's one grand fir that's fairly questionable as far as an ideal specimen. My recommendation was to, to remove that and supplement with additional plantings. I think they had mentioned, you know, as far as my recommendation would go is a, a stand of large just to add some species diversity on the lakeside.
Okay, any questions, any other questions for Kurt? All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up to public comment. You can see if you, if you want to let you know if we have any other question. Got to crowd them. Wait, we're closed. All right, we'll open up for a public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? I'm not gonna do star six again. Once again, anybody online or on the phone wish to comment? Is there anybody here? Okay, yes. Name and address?
My name is Robin Gilman, 244 Columbus Canyon Road, Grand Junction, Colorado. I will never be an actress because I can't remember my lines. But I want to first of all sincerely thank you for the time and energy that you give in caring for this treasured area. We're happy to see the design, which looks beautiful. Clearly, a lot of attention has gone into the details. We're really impressed. And we recognize the expertise and the work of the city staff and very much appreciate their recommendations. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wish to comment regarding this application? One more time, anybody online or on the phone that wish to comment? All right, with that, we will close the public comment. Commissioners, questions, discussion?
Just have a question about the tree removal. On the side of the driveway, is there, what's the reason for that? Or what was the discussion about? Along the curvature of the, of the driveway? I think you might, he, the applicant mentioned something about it was for holding the ground to get because it was steep slope, is that what? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm breaking up a.
So there is an existing driveway partially down this property?
Okay.
And then it would be extended?
Well, so it's an addition to the, okay.
Right.
I see.
The existing driveway is within five feet of the site property line, which is against code.
Okay.
So extending that.
I get it.
And so they're curving, they're curving in, so.
Right.
So new portion is per code, existing, totally. Part of the existing driveway is, but not, there's like a hump, from what I can see, there's that hump that's not, okay.
So it can't be more than 18 feet of the portion?
I think my scales up, I think it's about two feet off the site property line, so about three feet, so it would have to be.
And in that area in general, there's, I mean, there's a lot of things that have been there for a long time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and like I say, it was part of the state endowment lands or lands that they've auctioned off over the years. I can see where it could be tricky to enforce or require, especially with that small a size. I don't know if we want to, I mean, there's only so many of them out there that are gonna have that anymore. It's not gonna be a whole huge amount. Any other thoughts or questions or concerns with commissioners?
No concerns for me.
All right, I am open for a motion.
To approve here 2325, Sage 2308 with the staff recommending, recommended conditions.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to conditional use permit 2307, design review 2324, shoreline 2307, 1300 East Lake Street for Mile High Marina. We got Steve here, I guess this. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff, company. My name is Steve Millman, 706 North First, representing the applicant, Mile High Marina LLC. Sam Worley is with me tonight. Sam is the, is the controlling owner of Mile High Marina. It's a privilege to present this application to what I think represents a really combined private-public benefit in a unique way. The application is to replace the existing log boom at the marina with, oh, I forgot these, don't worry about this, with a wave attenuator breakwater, kind of a state-of-the-art, which will be considerably more efficient and also considerably more environmentally friendly than the current log boom. This is depicted here running around the perimeter of the marina. It will not only protect the marina, but it will protect the existing fuel dock, which is right here. Marina building is here, East Lake Street is here. Fuel dock is there. The fuel dock is not being moved, fuel dock is not being expanded. There is no expansion of the existing marina to the south. The expansion is to the west. And as I said, the fuel dock stays where it is and is not expanded or moved in any respect. The public benefit portion of this project is on top of this new breakwater. Will be a 10-foot wide deck, which will be, which will comprise an on-the-water boardwalk for public use, open to the public. It will be accessed by means of stairs and ADA compliant ramp coming down from East Lake Street, which has been preliminarily designed by Crestline engineer. The northwest corner of the, I'll call it a boardwalk, and the south end of the boardwalk would have shade structures, pergola structures, no sides, but a top with benches and tables where people can sit, enjoy themselves. Also, those would be the most likely locations for public art, which staff has asked the applicant to consider allowing and which the applicant has agreed to do so. The management of the public boardwalk will be a joint venture between the owner and the City Department of Parks and Recreation. It will be pinned down in an agreement between the owner and the city. The responsibility of the Department of Parks and Recreation under our preliminary discussions would be limited to basically a day-to-day cleaning of, of that surface, removal of garbage, that sort of thing. The applicant will remain responsible in all respects for the structural elements of not only the breakwater, but the boardwalk deck on top of it. The boardwalk will be closed after dark. There was a question raised by one of the letter writers as to how that would happen. That will be part of our agreement that will enter into the city, but most likely that will be accomplished by means of a gate that would be closed and locked. It is not intended to be used after dark, it will not be lighted. The plan is to not put mooring cleats on the outside of this. And that's a conscious plan out of a desire that that boardwalk be a pedestrian-friendly amenity and not a place for people to pull boats up that aren't supervised and, and party from the boats. So the plan is there will not be boats board on the outside of this. It does not really lend itself to that in any respect. The plan creates capacity to add approximately 94 additional slips to the marina, which will help in part, over the long term, cover the cost of building this, which is not an inexpensive project by any stretch and the cost of which, since we started this discussion in 2021, has got up, gone up almost by a factor of three times. The marina has a long waiting list for additional slips. Many more people on the list than, than the 90 or 94 slips that could be created here. They pulled that waiting list to better understand the people on that list. And well over 90% of those people already own boats and already designate Payette Lake as their primary place of use of their boat. So these are, with very few exception, existing boat users who use Payette Lake, but access it by ramping in on a daily basis. This project involves two jurisdictions. These are the submerged lands of the lake and under the jurisdiction of the Department of Land, State of Idaho, which requires an encroachment permit from them. The, that process goes to the Department of Lands, is a public process, public notices is published. Any person objecting has a right to request a hearing. Is noteworthy also that applicant, we have gone through that application, we have obtained that permit from the state, it is in the materials that were submitted with this application. It is noteworthy that the application to the Department of Lands was distributed to a number of state agencies, including the Department of Fish and Game, the Department of Water Resources, a federal agency, Army Corps of Engineers, the county, the city, and noteworthy in my mind, the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, which is the regulatory agency for our potable water system in the city of McCall. The second jurisdiction is yours, at, at the city of McCall, which, which has jurisdiction over the conditional use permit, the shoreline environment review, and the design review. Our application to the city was also distributed to a number of the same agencies, including the Department of Environmental Quality. At the state level, any one of those agencies or any person could have objected, requested a hearing, none did, including any of the agencies. In this process, we have also not received objections, including from DEQ, who again is the regulatory agency for our drinking water system here in McCall. The marina has existing leases with both the city and the state. The lease with the city is because part of the building is on upland property, which is owned by the city, and the lease with the state is required because it's a commercial marina. Under the lease with the city, the city receives rent, which is, which is calculated by a percentage of the gross receipts from the slips. So if slips are added, then the revenue to the city under the existing lease will increase proportionately. The same is the case with the state lease. We, well before filing any application, we initiated contact with the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council, had a meeting with them all the way back in August of 2021, had a good discussion. A number of questions were posed in that meeting. We were tasked with evaluating those questions and providing answers. Some of those questions involved environmental issues, as you would not be surprised to hear. That led to Sam retaining Jay Mills, whose resume is part of the materials you have, and who I believe is with us. Jay has over 30 years of experience, both on the public side and the private side, in designing, building, managing marinas. And he is invaluable in helping provide the answers to the questions that were posed by the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council. There are a number of noteworthy points that came out of that. This project does not involve any dredging of the lake bottom. It uses epoxy coated steel members, which Jay points out are approved for use in potable drinking water systems, let alone in this application. The deck is a marine-grade composite, and the above waterline wood features, of which there are a few, are treated with a material that has been approved for use in school playgrounds and other sensitive applications. There'll be no foam, there'll be no plastics, this system is a series of vertical fins with winch and cables that adjust them. The system would be built by a contractor who is nationwide, who has built them throughout the country, including in the northeast. And they are built to withstand ice, as well as waves. And the winch cables are stainless steel, so it's a very benign set of materials compared frankly to what's there now, and will be much more efficient in protecting the marina and, and the fuel dock area. The comprehensive plan calls for this whole area to be part of a lakefront recreation district. It specifically calls out a goal of having a boardwalk on the water somewhere in this district. And it, in map 5.6, which is the map that says what's the likelihood of change of use of properties, lists the marina property as one of the least likely to change use. So, so this application, the existing use, the proposed continued use, is wholly in line with, with your comprehensive plan. The use is a conditional use in both the shoreline and river environment zone and the navigable water zone. Frankly, nearly all of this and all of the additional, the new construction is in the navigable water zone. But the upland ramp and steps would be in the shoreline zone. This use is a, is a conditional use in both of those zones. And, you know, there are really not a lot of other code issues that are triggered by this. Parking, this property as part of the prior urban renewal district is exempt from providing off-street parking, under your code, under our code. The marina does have, have a lot across the street that it has leased for a long time, and that accommodates about 30 off-street parking spaces, but it is not required under the code to provide off-street parking. Frankly, given the polling of the people on the waiting list, and the fact that they already have boats and are already users of the lake, it is the anticipation of the owners that what will happen here is that day users will be converted, at least to the extent of the new slips, to slip lesses, which will reduce traffic on the ramps, and also affect parking positively to the extent that a day user is going to have to park a trailer and an appropriate vehicle to pull that trailer, whereas somebody with a slip will not have to park a trailer, and will be able to access the marina either in a vehicle, on foot, or, or on bicycle. So from a point of view of the parking, we understand it's always a concern, but we think actually this is going to reduce the existing demand of people that are day using these ramps. The staff report proposes a couple of conditions of approval that I wanted to visit with you about. One is that depending on your sense of quote-unquote proportionality, the marina will be obligated to construct new sidewalk curb and gutter across the front of the property. The whole proportionality discussion is kind of an interesting one to me, because the amenity, which is probably going to draw the most people, is the more than 1,100 feet of public boardwalk. So it's the public amenity itself. My gut reaction is that's piling on to add that significant expense on the marina, but that's not a very artful way of looking at it. Let's back up to why it arose. It arose because there is a paved striped pedestrian lane in front of the marina. The concern raised by staff completely legitimately is despite no parking signs, it appears people often park in that lane in the summer. People still walk through, but they have to navigate sometimes around parked cars. We think that's a legitimate concern, we just think there are a number of much less expensive ways to address that concern and make sure cars do not park in that lane, including things like bullards, and there are a variety of other ways to do it, that we would be happy to work with the city on and work with Kurt Wolf on. But there is an existing paved striped pedestrian area there, which has worked effectively. The sidewalk curb and gutter is no small undertaking, and that is one condition that we would ask you to, as, as you were invited to by staff, instead of requiring the sidewalk curb and gutter, require that the applicant provide a suitable means of preventing cars from parking in that established lane that are acceptable to city staff and city parks and rec. And that's the condition we would ask for on the, on the issue of the sidewalk. The other condition that I wanted to touch base with you about is bicycle parking. There, there is, bicycle parking is certainly in your code required in, in the commercial zones. However, there is no standard in, in your code for this use. So no matter how much and what type of bicycle parking you provide is a matter of your discretion. Brian has recommended 12 long-term spaces, well, I, I said it, Brian has recommended one long-term space per 20 slips, one short-term space per 10 slips. That would equate to potentially, if all of these slips were actually built, 12 long-term spaces and 25 short-term bicycle parking spaces. The, the first issue with the long-term is under your code, it has to be enclosed or covered. And the marina literally has no land to do that on. I, I also think that the intent of long-term bicycle parking is to address more typically residential uses and overnight uses, where somebody is going to need a place to park their bike overnight. The marina obviously doesn't involve that, the marina is not open typically after dark, and it's closed all winter. So I, we think that the, the long-term spaces are not appropriate for this use. And significant concerns are literally no land to build it on, that the marina owns or can control. The lot across the street, they lease for use by parking, but they do not have a right to build structures on it. They could put some of the short-term bicycle racks there. The distinction being the short-term racks do not have to be covered or enclosed. So we'd ask for your consideration on this. As requested, this, this would have more parking, more bicycle parking than any other use specified in your code. And want to be clear, Sam's all for it, having some designated appropriate bicycle spaces. We would ask that those be limited to the short-term spaces, and something more in the range of 15 short-term spaces be required. Those are the only two conditions about which we have a concern. I will note that Morgan, in her comments, requested that the owners prepare and submit, as part of the final engineering submittal, a spill containment and prevention plan, and she in fact provided links to the EPA templates for some of those plans. There, which by the way, we think is a great idea, that work is underway, and will be in fact provided. So that you know, currently, because these are fuel pumps, there are a number of regulatory mechanisms already in place. For example, there's not only a shut-off at the pumps, there's a shut-off at the building, that if there was any kind of a spill, fuel can be stopped from flowing out there. The fuel itself is stored underground across the street, not out on the lake. There are a variety of alarm systems, there's at least annual inspections, as you can imagine, by DEQ and a third-party inspection company. So it isn't that the marina hasn't paid a lot of attention to that, but the idea of doing a formal spill prevention and control plan is attractive, and as I say, that is in the process of being done. With that, I'd stand for any questions?
On the boardwalk, and it may have been in the application, but I didn't see it, or I may have missed it, is it planned on being closed throughout the winter?
That's a good question, I think the answer would be yes.
So there wouldn't be anybody maintaining snow removal or anything?
Marina's closed, I guess, I'm seeing Kurt shake his head, so.
No, it would not be closed.
No, it would be closed.
Oh, okay.
No snow removal.
Okay, okay, yeah, I was gonna say, that could be interesting. Okay, so no, okay, so basically, the gate would be locked upon the marina closure, but at the end of the season.
Right.
So maybe need to have that somewhere in whatever agreement?
Yeah. That makes sense, thank you. And another thing I didn't mention is, Kurt will address it, I'm sure, this plan's, this plan allows for, through Kurt's department's master planning, a dock to be brought off to the north. That would be a public dock, that would be in a sense the southern, southern bookend of that whole area north of the marina, that Kurt has a variety of plans for creating as non-motorized recreational use, swim lanes, non-motorized launching area. So there will be the ability to connect that dock to this breakwater, and come off to the north with that.
Sorry, I have two quick questions, which you just answered one of them with the ability for the dock to come off to the north. So I think that's, that's a great idea. The other one is, has there been any thought with like maximum, maximum occupancy on the dock, or on the, the boardwalk at all? I'm just, I'm thinking that would be an excellent place to watch fireworks on July 4th and easily get swamped.
Thank you, I think it's a really good question, and I don't think that our thinking has very evolved on that. I would think that's a topic we need to take on in our agreement as to the management. Fourth of July is a huge challenge, it's a huge challenge for the marina right now, and Sam has left his marina open on the Fourth of July, but it is increasingly becoming difficult. So I, it's a very good topic to.
Yeah. You're gonna add roughly 90 slips to the, the marina right now, and it's, it's a bitch getting gas in the summertime without that 90 slips. And the pumps are not gonna increase, there's still gonna be two pumps there, and that's all, all they're gonna do. Gonna add that many slips on there with these people gassing up instead of taking their boat out and going to the local service station down here and paying a cheaper price for gas, I would think. It doesn't seem like it's, like you've got enough service there to, to be able to handle that, and you're only gonna add 30 more parking spaces, which is that area on the other side of the road, I assume, but with the marina, that dirt lot there, it's kind of hilly, goes up to the top of that next street. Just doesn't sound like there's, there, with 90 more slips, you're gonna be able to service it with two, two pumps. And that's the only place, on the lake, you can get gas.
Right. It's a good question. I think, a couple of things, and Sam may have comments on this as well. It, it would be a very daunting task to increase that pump facility.
Yeah, but for the wait though, I mean, just the people that are out there waiting to get, don't even have a slip there, waiting and waiting and waiting, and I mean, and then, and then they add that many more slips, say. Just, it seems like, you know, the infrastructure or the, the service end of it is not, is not there.
Well, I appreciate your comment, and I'm a boat user, my, my boat is in May Marina, and I, I fuel there. And certainly there are times now when I avoid trying to get gas there, Saturday morning being one of them, but I'm, I'm able most times to pull up to it. No question that more users will increase it. The experience that Sam has had with this marina, and I noticed with May as well, is, is very rare to, most of the times, both these marinas are full of boats, sounds odd, but they are.
Oh, yeah.
And so it isn't like everybody piles out of here and has to get gas at the same time. And people are gonna, are, I think are just going to have to adjust their, their fueling needs and, and make the best of what's there, because increasing that is, is not an option. I think Sam's confident they can service it, and particularly with marina users knowing that they need to pick off times to, to get their gas. As to the parking, you know, it's very interesting, but when you consider the fact, and I think this is very significant, and I said it once, but I'll, I'll repeat it, that, that almost everybody on the waiting list who would be eligible for these slips, because there's first come, first served type of arrangement, already has a boat and already uses the lake, so what are they doing? They're trailering it in, so what are they doing? They're parking their trailer and their truck. They're a slip holder, they don't, they want or need to be parking their trailer, all right? They, they might.
You're only adding 30 more parking spaces, I'm, where are these, where are they?
No, they're not adding.
Not adding any.
We're not adding, those are existing.
Not required. Okay, those are existing, scan.
And, so I think the existing, not only there, but up in the existing public parking areas. areas, there would, there will be more room, because it'll be less trailers have to be up there, because it'll be less day users. But, yeah, and it, you know, this, as a matter of your code, this is an exempt use from providing off-street parking. And given the number of potential public spaces in the area, which we inventoried as part of the state process, there's, there's still a lot of parking available. And if we're not filling it up with trailers, there's even more parking available. So, so it's, it's a situation that, that the owners feel will work, and particularly when we're reducing the number of trailers that have to go up there for a whole day.
Is there any thought of a shuttle service under the lot, this far enough away that you'd have a shuttle service back and forth to the Marina? I mean, is that a possibility, or is that, has that been looked at?
We have not looked at that. I mean, and I guess if the demand is such that, you know, what's available is untenable, I guess we could look at that, but I don't think that, let me put it this way, that's not part of this application.
Good.
I agree with two things. 90 more slips means less activity on the ramp, but I don't believe it reduces traffic. I also believe that the 10 long-term is probably not feasible or necessary, but it'll be 275 slips. So I would like to see you encourage bicycle use and put 30 temporary bike, I mean, that, that solves some of the, a third of the issue maybe?
Yeah.
And maybe we can work with Parks and Rec to have more bike parking up top of the hill. Possibility.
And, and thank you. I, I think the owner can accommodate the short-term as requested by Brian. Because they can put some in that lot across the street and some in, some in front of the building. And, and you're right, more, more of that would, would accommodate more users.
The only other comment I have is on the sidewalk. We asked David to put sidewalk in down on the corner, so it would seem to be only fair to ask that of your end of the street as well. That's just to throw out.
Understood. The main thing I wanted to point out is where that discussion came from, which is the existing paved pedestrian lane getting blocked by cars. And there's no doubt there will be a sidewalk there at some point. Sam has worked with Kurt for quite some time. And as to how he can participate in the master plan that would put that in all the way down that street. And this may not be the last application you see for this, for this facility, but for this particular application, we are hopeful that preserving what's there and keeping it open, that you will find that to be sufficient.
I think in the recommendations, it does talk about bollards or another barrier, so I think Brian can sort that out with Sam or you.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions for Steve before we go to staff?
Yeah, I have a quick question regarding the shade structures out there on the, on the boardwalk. What, what is that exactly? I mean, how much, how substantial of a structure are you talking?
What Brian has just put up is a couple of, these are renderings, so understand that, but that's an example of potentially what the one on the northwest corner would look like. They are, I should have the dimensions, I don't. I think they're 14-ish by 14, something like that, do you remember Sam? Or is it bigger than that?
In your code.
Yeah. They would have no sides, and that's an example of what they might look like.
Okay. Is the, is the roof intended to be permanent, or is it more of a shade tarp kind of thing that comes down in the winter?
That's a good question. I don't know that we've gotten that for you. I think that has to be looked at in terms of final design, and also we need to work with Kurt and his department on that in terms of what they would prefer to see. As I hear you saying, I think it may make some sense for that to either be pervious in some respect or, or removable.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, thanks, Steve. Does your engineer want to say anything or everything good?
Nope.
Thanks. Okay. All right, Brian?
All right, yes, thank you. This is a initial use permit for the expansion of Mile High Marina to add approximately 90 boat slips. The approximately is largely based on the sizes of the boats. But yeah, there is enough room for 94 additional average-sized boats. It generally meets code, there are a few conditions of approval, the sidewalks have been pretty thoroughly discussed. As they're saying, they're contributing a pretty substantial public amenity and furthering the goals of the comprehensive plan that I think warrants some consideration in the discussion on proportionality of sidewalk requirements within this. But there is a ongoing issue of people parking in the bike lane, both in front of the building and along the street between the Marina and Brown Park. So the inclusion of bollards or other barriers would be appropriate if sidewalks are not required. On the topic of bicycle parking, the long-term parking is also, is, as Steve was mentioning, for residential use, that is one use, but also for employees that have to work shift on a day like today that may not want to ride their bike home with a wet butt. Go into my office, you will see my bicycle hanging high and dry, and I will have a dry butt on my way home.
The city doesn't have any covered parking for you?
No.
He's off.
We're working.
Sorry about that.
And so that is really, that's, you know, the intent of that. Yeah, the quantity of that was really just kind of my best guess as to what is appropriate. As discussed, this will hopefully lead to a decrease in the overall demand for vehicle parking, because people will not need to bring a boat, trailer, and a large vehicle to lake to unload their boat, park, and then park it somewhere else. They can go and use the Marina and have it stored there seasonally. And so hopefully the vehicle parking will decrease, bicycle parking will increase. So people will just ride their bike down there, go get on the bike, have a nice summer Yeah, we've received a lot of public comment on this, both in favor and the opposition, and requesting additional information. The initial use permit standards are on page 13 of the staff report. If there is any question from you guys about the conformance with that, I'd encourage you to ask for more information. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Brian?
I'm glad that Kurt is in attendance. Kurt, do you speak on any parks-related questions you may have?
This is designed to stay in the water and get iced in. Is this designed, do you know if anybody's tested that concept?
I will let the applicant speak to that. I believe it has been utilized in other lakes that freeze over, so.
Yeah, I think he'd said that, that.
Yes, it is in fact designed to stay in the water through the winter. These have been constructed in the Northeast and in Canada and are specifically designed to be able to tolerate ice through the vertical fins.
Any other questions for Brian? Morgan?
Yeah, I have a few comments on this application, and Steve mentioned a few of them. The first comment that I had was requesting this, this, sorry, the spill prevention, control, and countermeasure plan. After our mystery spill this summer, we're more knowledgeable about what tools we can utilize to help have an action plan if a spill ever is to occur near our intake station again. So this was kind of just a, let's document what you have, how we're gonna, how you plan on controlling a spill if it occurs, and just having a document, because in moments like that, you just need something that you can read and work off of. So that was my first comment. And then the second comment relates to Brian's concerns about the pedestrian facilities along East Lake Street. We do have it fully designed, and the applicants have that, but there seems to, we're unsure if there's an ADA route. There's an ADA ramp for the, for the, for the dock, but we're unsure of how it integrates currently and if it would be ADA accessible right now. So showing how pedestrians will navigate to that would be helpful and just answer some of those questions, because the sidewalks end south of the Marina. So how pedestrians get to that area, working with staff through some of those solutions.
Commissioners, any questions for Morgan?
Mr. Chairman, one comment that Morgan raised?
Well, we can have that after, when you have everybody on for that. Yeah. Because yeah, on that side, there's no real, the sidewalk plan is for the sidewalk on the other side of the street, correct?
No, there's actually, there's actually a plan to extend the sidewalk improvements that you see in Legacy all the way to Brown Park.
So there's a plan for both sides?
Yeah, and then there's a smaller sidewalk on the east side of Lake Street for all those residential homes near the Glass House that we saw previously.
And if I could add to that, when we were doing the Brown Park renovation, that was part of some of the use of those MRA funds was to fully engineer both sides of East Lake Street. That were shovel-ready, we can go after grants, we can work with private development to help offset the design costs and continue to work together to hopefully get this accomplished at some point.
So the sidewalk is gonna start right at the corner there where the boat ramp comes down on both sides of the street, meaning that the front of the building, and it's gonna go all the way to Brown Park?
It's been designed all the way up and around the corner, past Brown Park to.
Mill Street.
Mill Street, correct.
Okay.
So continuation of the Legacy curb gutter sidewalk and kind of that promenade with bike lane.
Is that parking lot, little parking lot, the one they were talking about earlier, is, is that still dirt? Is that, or has that been paved, or?
It's dirt.
It's just dirt, huh?
It's gravel.
Gravel, excuse me.
And with, with that design, as you move further up the street, they've incorporated back-in parking on the east side of the road to increase the number of parking stalls as you work your way up. Mill Road.
That's the big lot on the other side of the road, or up East Lake Street.
Along the street.
Okay.
End or end up Mill.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Morgan or Kurt? All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to public comment. I don't know about the list. We'll open up first to anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application. Again, you might need to hit star six if you're muted. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wished to comment regarding this application?
Mr. Chair, this is Sadie Noah. I'd love to make a comment.
Okay, yes, Sadie, if you'd like to comment, please give your name and address.
Sadie Noah, my address is 481 Tim Street in McCall, Idaho. I would just like to speak in favor of this. I know a huge amount of effort has gone into the design and as a, as someone who uses Payette Lake and uses it for boating, I think it's not only going to be a benefit for boat users, but an incredible addition to the waterfront and beautification of our downtown. And I think it's incredibly generous of the Marina to, to put so much thought and expense and into building something that's gonna be a long-term, long-term legacy for, for McCall.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application?
Okay, anybody in the audience that wished to comment?
Yes. These are hard copies. I apologize for the hard copies of a letter that I would like to read, and I'll wait. I'm gonna be commenting for the Big Paint Lake Water Quality Council.
I will remind you, we have a three-minute thing, and I'll start that once you get going. I'm not, I'm not counting now.
I'm just gonna, it's just the letter I'm gonna read, and when I timed myself, it was a little over three.
That's fine, the letter's fine.
Yeah, okay, great. So.
And if we had a name and address?
Yes, name and address. My name's Deb Faraday, and I'm 315 Burns Road here in McCall. And I wanted to just say to Steve, that Steve, we appreciate your presentation to the big, like, our Water Quality Council, and we've reviewed the application, we have questions, we just have some concerns. I'd like to read the letter. So dear members of the McCall Planning and Zoning Commission, the Big Paint Lake Water Quality Council, a local 501(c)(3), has concerns about the proposed expansion of the McCall, of the Mile High Marina. Our mission is to help protect, preserve, and improve the water quality of Big Paint Lake and its watershed through education, supporting scientific study, and conservation activities. Our council wants to build strong relationships with local agencies and local government. The citizens of our town are curious, and it is our responsibility to ask questions so that we can answer them and better serve as stewards of Paint Lake. Since the waters of Paint Lake are the sole source of drinking water for the city of McCall, our council would like to see evidence that the water quality will not be degraded by this expansion project. This gem, Paint Lake, is not only the source of good health and wellness for our town of approximately 3,000, but it is the driver of our economy. No one wants to quote, kill the golden goose we depend on for our health and our economic stability. At this time in the process, we, we just don't feel like we have enough information to guide our decisions about the expansion project. We would like to see the applicant supply more information, which demonstrates that water quality in Paint Lake not be harmed by expansion of the Marina. We just don't have those facts or studies at this point in time. We would feel that by hiring a licensed, credentialed third party, one that both the city and applicant agree upon, the applicant could supply this council with more information. Specific concerns would be, since there's gonna be a total of 1,127 feet of decking added with this expansion, which provides a shaded habitat for Eurasian milfoil, a potential harmful plant that can destroy boating and swimming in a lake which already exists in Paint Lake. In the reply letter to Big Paint Lake Water Quality Council dated March 27, 2023, the applicant is said to be contributing to the cost of annual removal of milfoil. Will this effort to remove milfoil continue, and how much is this contribution? More importantly, what will the overall effect on milfoil proliferation be due to the addition of more shaded area on Payette Lake? Number two, and maybe some of this was answered earlier in Steve's presentation, but in this letter, proximity of petroleum byproducts near the city drinking water intake pose concerns for the city's drinking water filtration system, which serve approximately 3,000 residents should there be a petroleum spill. The application states that the project is moving to the south away from the freshwater intake near Legacy Park, which is great. However, as we saw this spring, a petroleum spill into the city's stormwater system saw oil travel all the way from Art Roberts Park to Mill Park. The EPA was mobilized to come into our town to clean up the spill. So in the event of a petroleum spill, what mitigation measures are in place at the Marina? Also, what current practices are in place when boats are getting fuel? Are measures being taken to prevent petroleum from entering the lake? Most importantly, and this is kind of a looming issue. Most importantly, and this is kind of a looming issue that persists and has persisted, how do we know the carrying capacity of our lake? Payette Lake is small and we have seen growth in tourism over the past few decades. With the increase in population in the Boise Valley and here, there is more recreational pressure on Payette Lake. At what point do we know that we have reached a tipping point for numbers of watercraft on the lake? As the Water Quality Council, we don't feel that moving forward without answers to these questions is in the interest of protecting water quality as well as the economic stability, remembering that these two factors are inextricably linked. We'd like to see a study which proves that this expansion will be an asset and not harm the health of Payette Lake and its relationship to the economy of the town. The waterways management plan adopted in February of 2023 outlines a plan to assure the sustainability of Big Payette Lake along with Cascade Lake and Warm Lake in recognition of their economic value to Valley County. The plan is broad-reaching and includes land use impacts on the waterways, carrying capacity of lakes, and environmental resources that guide the use on or near these bodies of water. This plan even admits that ongoing studies will be needed to ensure that stability will reign. We ask that you not move this application forward without asking for more complete information. Our lake is a gem worth protecting and we must act with great care. And we must strive to work together as we move to ensure that this gem remains stable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody here? I hope you can state your name and address again.
Robin Gilman, 244 Columbus Canyon Road, Grand Junction, Colorado. I am here to underscore the importance of balancing progress and protection of what we have. And to Deb's point, I have been using this lake for over 60 years. I can tell you, I'm on Pilgrim Cove. The milfoil that grows around the Girl Scout camp and the Point is horrific. And I've asked before, and God bless the people of the city that comes and gets them up, but that, that growth is just expanding like you can't believe. The, the water quality, I don't see as many little frogs or as many water snakes as we've had over the years. They're all going away. The other thing I want to share is about the, the water quality. We just took out the sailboat and it's black. You guys, it never used to be black before. This is on the cove. And the other thing, to Deb's point about boat usage, the wakeboards that are coming, they have these huge wakes. You should see the docks going up and down, the, the water that's crashing against the soil that's eroding the soil. So it's just something to, to please work together to do both ways, but don't, don't ruin this lake. Don't, don't, I mean, please do more studies or charge us more money for our, our boating invasive species, you know, or, I don't know. But it's, it's, I've seen it. It's going. And I'm living proof of it. It's what I've seen over the years. Thank you.
There any?
Hi, thank you all. I'm Lark Corvay, 415 Quail Circle, Boulder, Colorado. And I just want to give honor to the fact that we're in the American Legion space. Our grandfather was one of the early leaders here. We've been here over 70 years, even though we're all summer residents. And I want to, I want to speak to Deb's point about asking you for further study. I have no comment on the overall plan because I don't know enough about that and I'm not an expert. But I can speak to the fact that growing up with countless minnows, they're all gone. There are no minnows anymore on the lakefront in the cove. The swamp, we still do call it the swamp, guys, the lillipad link. It is, it's been degraded. There's now, it's smaller than it used to be. There's a separation between two parts because boats have come in and now I guess people think, but that's all, you know, one small area. I would just ask that you really think about the water quality and get whatever studies from whoever you need to make sure that whatever development is going on does not further erode the animal and the, and the vegetable life that we've seen be degraded over these decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to comment? Is there anybody else online or on the phone that wished to comment regarding this application? And if you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. All right, hearing none. We'll end that in the public comments. Steve, would you like to come back and answer any of the questions?
Yeah, before I do, Kurt, were you going to comment?
I'd be happy to just add a few things as it relates to Kurt Wolf, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. We've been working with the applicant, the owner, for the past couple of years on this project. If you haven't seen some of the concepts for just north of the Marina for that non-motorized use area, this project really acts as an anchor for those concepts. You can find those on our, you know, in our recently adopted Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. So we've, you know, over the course of a couple of years, you know, our staff, working with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, community members, other city departments are in support of the project. It's, you know, we're not, it's unlikely we're going to gain additional public shoreline on Payette Lake. And so this applicant's theoretically building over 1,000 feet of it. I think that in turn is also going to alleviate congestion and wear and tear on some of our other public waterfronts. So again, we're, we're in favor of the project. I, I don't discredit Deb Faraday's letter here. I think long-term impacts on the lake need to continue to be assessed and, and, you know, sought out. So we're also active in looking into that and what, what we need to do and what needs to be done. So I appreciate that. And again, as I, I saw some of the public comments that came in. Happy to field any questions the commission has as it relates to those from the park side on maintenance or whatever. We're still gonna, we, we still have a lot of fine tuning to do on that. Some of that, we are waiting on, you know, what these public comments were and what final design is actually going to look at. But so far, we, we don't see any red flags and we think it can be managed well and an agreement can be, you know, penciled out that will both work from a maintenance standpoint and a financial standpoint long-term. As it relates to the Marina expansion portion of the project, I think Steve did a great job of, you know, over my 14 years maintaining these facilities. You know, that boat ramp does see a lot of traffic. It's a facility that gets a lot of wear and tear. So to see less launch traffic hopefully will, will help. And I do see additional slip rentals similar to what IDL has stated that more slip rentals should reduce that day use launch traffic, which in turn is going to help our maintenance crews out in that infrastructure. Again, happy to answer any questions that relates to public comments today. And I just want to let the commission know that, you know, it's been a great working relationship to try and outline what this public amenity would be. And I think it's a, it's going to be valued for a long time.
All right. I think we'll let Steve reply to any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Millman again. I'll admit to some frustration about this. The Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council didn't come find us. We reached out to them. There were questions posed. Sam retained a highly qualified specialist on all of the issues being discussed and provided answers last March. The first thing we've heard since then is tonight. So I think Sam's actions demonstrate that he is a willing participant in working with the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council. But to suggest that he somehow is going to solve all the problems on the lake as a condition of getting his application approved and constructing this significant public amenity is unreasonable and it's unfair. Nobody has more investment in the quality of this lake than Sam Worley does. And let's not forget that. This project does not disturb Upland soil. It does not introduce fertilizers and treatments into the water. It does not create any runoff into the water. Those three things are the biggest singular risk to this lake. There's none of that going on here. That doesn't say there's no risk, but none of the traditional sources of, of problems will be exacerbated by, by this project. So I also want to note that the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, which regulates, inspects, and approves the city's potable water system, has gotten two notices of this application and has not expressed concerns about it. And I don't think that should be overlooked. Sam has an active annual milfoil eradication program. The advantage that the Marina has, which is significant, is it gets very deep, very quickly. And milfoil does not like deep water. It needs light. It's one of the reasons. And I'm a lake user too. And I've been using this lake for 43 years. And I have a boat in Deb's family Marina. And I think I have the distinction of having the oldest boat in the Marina, but they still let me stay there. And I'm out on the lake. It's a powerboat. And I'm out on the lake because I go out and I anchor and I swim. So I've seen the changes. There's no question that the advent of different types of boats presents unique challenges. And, and that the county is going to have to, and I think is in the process of trying to address those in cooperation with the users and the council and, and other people. That is a much bigger question than is raised by this application. Lake capacity, so the milfoil question is interesting to me. It's important to remember that milfoil needs light. And whether or not there's a deck on top of this, the top of this structure will be solid. Sam would have a right tomorrow to go in and replace his log boom with a new system, such as he proposes with no public deck on top of it. And it would not require a conditional use permit. It would be replacement of an existing structure. That's not what he's proposing. He's proposing to combine it with a significant public amenity. The depth of the water and, and the location significantly different than Pilgrim Cove. Pilgrim Cove is warmer. When I'm going to swim, sometimes I'll go to Pilgrim Cove to swim because it's warmer and it's very shallow. Okay. So it's not to say there are any issues on the lake. But I will note the waterways management plan to which Deb referred, a county-wide plan that addressed all the water bodies in February, concluded that dissolved oxygen was above target levels, phosphorus was below levels of concern. That's great news. That hasn't always been the case. The other thing that plan specifically stated was, based on all the information available today, the lake is not, quote unquote, over capacity. It has not reached capacity. That's not me. That's the waterways plan that was adopted by the county with a lot of input from a lot of people. That plan reports that there's an 83% satisfaction rate of users of this lake and only 13% of the users of this lake report that they think it's too crowded. Again, I'm out on that one. Sure, on a Saturday, it gets busy, six, seven Saturdays of the year. Can I, can I not do what I want to do? Well, you can still do it. But, but again, to suggest that somehow we need to solve the problem of what is the lake capacity as a condition of this application is, is just not reasonable. Will the, the effort and the commitment to annual milfoil eradication continue? Yes, it will. I mean, Sam's been doing it for a long time without being made to. Will it continue? If you want to make that a condition of approval, that's fine. And will it continue with the expanded facility? And will the Marina be taking responsibility for that? Yes, it will. But again, it has not been a significant problem in there because of the depth of the water. The, since we're talking about water quality, and I don't know if you have already accessed to that GIS that I submitted that shows where the intake line is, because I was, I thought I know where it was and I was pretty close. But it's somewhat comforting to see where it actually is. And if you don't have it readily available, I. The blue line is the water intake line. This is the existing Marina. The, the proposed breakwater and additional slips will not go any farther south than the existing Marina. So it will not get any closer to this line than the existing Marina. This line is actually much closer to the May Marina than it is to the Mile High Marina. The depth of that intake at low water is 75 to 80 feet deep. At high water is 90 to 100 feet deep. That's a very important fact from the point of view of maintaining the integrity of that water, even if you did get fuel in the water. It's likely to stay on the surface. And with, with a good spill prevention plan, it's likely not to migrate at all from Marina. Knock on wood, they've never had an incident. But thanks to Morgan's suggestion, they're going to have a much more comprehensive spill prevention plan. So I suspect that's partly why DEQ hasn't commented because there's no evidence of any danger to that intake line. There's no different risk than is presented today, other than the fact that you will potentially have more boats sitting in slips. The most important issue Deb thought was lake capacity. Again, I, I look at the waterways management plan. It's reported as we haven't reached capacity. We're still under what was, and I thought the capacity calculations were very conservative in that plan. And the types of watercraft, no doubt, we need to continue to work together on those. And let me make it clear, Sam is willing to continue to work with the Big Payette Lake Water Quality Council. But that's a two-way street. That's a discussion. That's not sitting for eight months and then coming in here tonight and saying, no, they've got to solve, they've got to solve these problems, if they are problems. So am I happy about that? I'm not. I don't, I don't think that bespeaks our desire to have a real discussion. But nonetheless, I will say again on the record, Sam is ready and willing to work with the council on continuing to, to be a responsible steward at the Marina and to continue to do his milfoil abatement, to do the spill prevention plan with confidence that we're not moving any part of that Marina one foot closer to the intake line than it already is. So do continuing studies need to be done of the lake? Of course. Is, is, is the Marina willing to be a participant in those? Of course. As I said, I don't know, anybody has more investment in this lake being a resource valued by people than Sam Worley does. But should we somehow stop the world and tell them, well, you gotta, you gotta disprove the negative. You gotta also solve our problem with wake boats. You've got to tell us how many boats can be on this lake. Again, keep in mind, over 90% of the people on the waiting list already boat on this lake. They're already out there. Okay? That's not fiction. That's fact. So there's reasonable. And then there is, I think, overreaching. And I think the application and the applicant has made a diligent effort to be responsible. We have a top-flight environmental specialist who I think is with us. And if you have questions for him, he can answer them, I think, who's been involved in Marina design and management for a very long time. We've reached out. The state has reached out. The state's process isn't a walkthrough. They, they engage all of the agencies, including Fish and Game and IDEQ. So I think, I think Sam's approached this responsibly. He's proposing a, a significant public amenity. He's also proposing to be able to increase his revenue in proportion. Is it perfect? No. Might there be a longer wait at the gas pumps? Could be. But overall, I think it's a tremendous project. And I'd stand for any additional questions if you have any.
Commissioners, any questions for Steve or applicant? Commissioners, any questions for Steve or the applicant? Thanks, Steve. All right, well, commissioners, discussions.
Nick?
Okay, Morgan has something to clarify, yes.
Steve mentioned that there wasn't a risk to our intake station, but we're always concerned about our intake station, and that's why we asked for that spill response plan. And it is in our source water protection documents, I believe, that we have a plan from the Marina in place so that we have that response. That Sabrina Simpson told me, the water systems manager, and we thought it would be hard to get into our intake station, but we learned differently this summer with a small spill, a small unidentified spill. So we're just, we are very aware of the quality of the intake and how to protect it and working on how to protect it from future spills. We've also acquired many more protection devices with assistance from the EPA, containment buoys, and other devices that we can utilize now.
Great.
The spill response is not on conditions of approval?
It's in the engineering. Yeah.
All right, commissioners, I guess, get some of the questions. One of them would be the sidewalk requirement or potential requirement. I don't really see making a very small section of sidewalk in advance. I mean, I kind of have an idea of where there is. I personally think that, I mean, it's kind of a paved pathway going up there right now to where it connects and then drops down to the round park, but I can certainly see, you know, the kind of pillards or whatever to block that to avoid the parking. And I think potentially inside of that even is space for some bike parking as well, that if we did the sidewalk, it would eliminate that potential bike parking.
Bike parking next to the Marina, you mean?
Well, I think there's space maybe there to have some there and then potentially some across the street.
Yeah, right up there to the Marina building, that area.
Yeah, and then it's kind of protected as well. That's kind of my thoughts on that.
I guess while I understand Steve's point about providing a thousand-foot of sidewalk out on the lake, you're also pulling in a ton of additional revenue for the Marina and for the city. But like I said earlier, I think to be equitable, that if a sidewalk is, or an escrow is in our cove, then we should leave that in there.
Well, it's in there, but also if they're giving other amenities to the public. The boardwalk is something he wouldn't have to do, which is getting amenities to the public, which is much more of an amenity than 12 feet of sidewalk.
But he couldn't expand the Marina size without?
Well, I would think if the Marina, and maybe we can discuss that, if there's any additional expansions to the Marina or the building itself, then falls into the sidewalk category a bit more.
That's what they wouldn't do.
No, I know, that's down there, but I just, the very small section of sidewalk wouldn't connect to a sidewalk.
No, we're done with David's sidewalk right now, but that is a master playing goal, so this is, I believe this is our only opportunity to get this contribution established. Is that right?
There is always the possibility they will want to do more things at this site, given its location and complexity. Basically, any change of use or structure is going to be a new conditional use permit, at which point we can have this discussion all over again. But for now, this is our opportunity to require.
Tom Ryan, you got, or Dana?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess my quick thoughts is, you know, I'm a little bit skeptical on the fact that increasing the number of boat slips is going to reduce the number of traffic on the boat ramp. I think I see it kind of as, you know, we often see, you know, you increase the size of a road because we have too much traffic and it just quickly gets filled up with more cars. So I kind of think that's what's going to happen here. But at the same time, I still support the project. I think it's a great amenity to the city. I like the fact that it ties together with the Parks and Rec Master Plan really well. And I think the whole community will really be able to use this space and enjoy it. I guess my comment with the parking and the additional boat traffic is I don't necessarily think that is the Marina's issue, but, you know, increasing the number of bike parking spots seems like a really good idea. I'm not, I'm a little hesitant on the long term or at least having too many of those because I don't think the boat users will use them. I think the boat users and restaurant users will actually just use more short-term parking. And then I'm not sure which one of you suggested this, but it does seem like using bollards or, you know, putting that bike parking right there out in front of the building would kind of help, you know, alleviate and block it from having cars parked there. So that seems like a pretty good idea. The last thing I would say, and I really bring this up just because I know we got people in the room with the city that hopefully are already thinking about this, so I'll just mention it. But, you know, I have less of a concern with the milfoil. I have less of a concern with any sort of like spill containment. I mean, I know, Morgan, you mentioned that that is on the high priority for the city, but hopefully folks are beginning to watch the quagga mussel moving into the state in the Snake River, and those things can live at very deep parts of the lake and will clog up the intakes quickly. So, you know, thinking about moving in that direction and how we can protect that boat ramp, protect the Marina to help kind of stop those invasive critters would be really excellent.
I tend to think that, you know, one of the issues is where the boat ramp is and boats backing in and then the pedestrian traffic that's right there. I think this is a unique opportunity to kind of clean that up a little bit as best we can. I mean, there's always going to be that conflict, just the way that that area is developed. But having additional spots for people to moor and keep their boats on the lake, I feel like it, I feel like it does reduce the trailer traffic that's right there. So that kind of is, it's helping that situation and kind of going the right way. The other, the other thing that I see is, you know, whether that sidewalks or bollards to be able to clean up the pedestrian traffic that's in front of the Marina. Yeah, I think that's all helping as well. I also feel like, I agree with the comments that the long-term bicycle parking, we're probably have a greater need for the short-term parking in that area. And I just know from experience, you know, boats that are out there, if there's an opportunity to bike down there, especially in the summertime where traffic is so heavy, that I will, I certainly would bicycle down there to go ride on a boat versus trying to find a place to park. So I like that about the project too. And then, you know, offering up the public community in the process of, you know, repairing the breakwater that's out there, I think is a huge benefit to the city. And then I also agree with the comments, you know, we do have some greater issues with this lake and the congestion and the boats and the wakeboats and all that stuff. I do agree with those comments, but do we burden this project with all of those greater problems that we're certainly going to have to pull together and figure out? And those are greater than I think are, what we could solve in this room here right now and pinning it on this project. I think we're missing an opportunity to clean up some safety issues that we have in front of the Marina, maybe potentially reduce some of the trailer traffic and create a beautiful amenity for our city. So those are my thoughts.
Dana, how about you?
Yeah, this is complicated. There's a lot of layers to this one. I agree that this is potentially a great project for our city, but sustainability is true to my heart, especially protecting lakes. So, I mean, I think looking at invasive species prevention and management and adding that potentially as a condition of approval moving forward for this project could be something we look at and what exactly that looks like. But I do, I do agree with Tom.